Okay, thank you. We'll pull the meeting to order here at 7:05 on Tuesday, April 16. And we'll go to our first application. This is an informal hearing for a pending application. Excuse me. This is the Homeland Towers LLC and T-Mobile Northeast LLC, New Singular Wireless PCS LLC, Town in Newcastle. Application for a special permit for a wireless telecommunications services facility on Lawrence Lane.
Good evening. Thank you Chairman and members of the board. Robert Codiosso from Snyder &amp; Snyder. We, since we last met back last year, we were able to perform the balloon test for leap-off conditions. We did publicly notice that. I hope you had the opportunity to go out and take a look, but nevertheless, we did the full visual resource evaluation with the full proposed height at 180 feet. We also submitted a response to some of the initial comments, including a revised plan, a letter regarding the wetlands delineation. We also submitted a stormwater management report. And since that time, we've received a number of different comments from the town engineer, who we've already been in discussion with as far as trying to resolve some of the technical issues. We received the town planners' comments and some of the other consultants' comments that we'll be happy to respond to in the next coming weeks. We're also scheduled tomorrow night to appear for the first time in front of the ARB. We didn't appear in front of them previously because they were also waiting for the View Shed report as well. So we are scheduled to be in front of them tomorrow night.
Okay. Customarily, what does the BAR do on these applications? Do they make a recommendation regarding disguise or concealment?
Aesthetics or whatever, you know, relationship it has to the surrounding area.
There's a code requirement that be referred to them.
Yes.
And I think last time it was made a condition and that became the subject of some litigation and the court agreed with the planning board, so.
It does happen.
But we'll appear in front of them tomorrow night and throughout the process.
Okay, great. Okay. Are there any changes that you want to amplify at this point?
You know, I think that, I think that some of the comments, I don't think we need to go through the comments in detail because we did just receive them.
Right.
There were a number of technical comments that we want to respond to and follow. We will document some of the things that we've already spoken about, which is the reason why the Con Ed lines aren't feasible. We'll document the reason why we are on this particular portion of the property. I don't think we've done a good enough job of that, but we ended up on this portion of the property because of some of the wetlands. The vernal pool that was previously identified on the property because of the town's proposed salt shed, because of the topography. So I think we'll do a better job of documenting that. I think that'll be very helpful. There was also a comment regarding the height of the facility, so we'll provide some additional maps. And if there's any way we can reduce the height, we'll work towards that. If it's possible to eliminate the height variance, we'll certainly work towards that as well. So I think those are the broader brushstrokes. I think that the View Shed and the visual renderings, I think, do tell the story. I know we had a discussion about showing the relationship to the existing Con Ed lines and some of the other surrounding areas. And I think, I think the photographs and the renderings do a good job of that, but we'll amplify on some of those issues and we'll, we'll help to build the record and respond to all the consultants' comments before we meet again next.
There was one issue I wanted to quick, just quickly ask, and that was, I think it was really Bob was looking at, and that was whether or not, in fact, our steep slope regulation would be triggered. I wasn't quite sure where we've come out on that.
I reviewed the steep slopes application and submitted. There's more information I have to put on the plan to make determination whether it needs planning board or not. But my opinion is that so on, it doesn't appear as if it may need a planning board for steep slopes, but I won't be able to tell until I get the updated steep slopes analysis.
Okay. Good. Okay. Sabrina, why don't you lead us with your findings and observations?
Like Robert said, he had just got the memos and whatnot. I think that one of the things, Robert, you know, I had reiterated, you know, the RF consultants, the visual consultants. There's some changes and things that you need to make to the plans to satisfy my comments. One of the things I did provide the board with is the intent for your notice of intent to be lead agency, which we should do tonight. It is an unlisted action. One of the things I really wanted to talk to you and the board about is about the height. And I know, you know, given where you are on that slope, that, you know, you need the height to get your coverage area and the RF consultant needs additional coverage maps from you. But what is the realistic reality, if you will, of a co-locator here? I mean, because if you need to be at a certain height for your services and there's already other companies in proximity that have coverage, maybe, you know what I'm saying? We need to understand the relationship of that because if you don't need to clear the entire area for future co-locators, then that won't be something that the board would want to know. Because if you can't, if you can lower your height, great. But if you're reducing the capacity of other carriers by where you're locating because it's not good because of the density and the elevation you're at, then let's be real here and maybe we cannot co-locate in this area because of elevations, which deems maybe more protective measures in regards or more conservative measures in land clearing and area for future cabinets.
Sure.
Okay, so I want to be really realistic here.
Yeah, no, I think those are good points. So, and that goes back to what we talked about before. We, when we were leasing the property from the town, we did relocate on the property because of the vernal pool. We did lose ground elevation. So that was an important factor in the proposed height of the tower, which is 30 feet above the height limit. With that said, we think it would be a mistake not to build in the co-location space at the base because, quite frankly, the town has a very significant plan to build a salt shed there. So we know the area will be disturbed and it makes more sense. A lot of the trees we're taking out are going to help in that project as well. A lot of the work that we're doing with the stormwater will ultimately tie into that project as well. So I think it would be, while, I think your point is well taken and I think if we were in a virgin area that didn't have that other proposed use, I think that might be something to look at. I think the reality is though, this tower will ultimately support four co-locators with or without 180 feet. I think we're going to work with both, and remember, we have two co-locators on this application.
Yeah.
We have both T-Mobile and we have AT&amp;T. And we had previously had interest from Verizon, they just didn't have it in quote-unquote their current budget. So we know they're definitely going to come. And then the question is, does Sprint and T-Mobile merge? If you saw today's news, not so much, but I think that the reality is there'll always be three to four carriers. So I think we have to keep those issues in mind.
And so, so I would say to you, if that is the case, then we need to see some coverage maps at the lower levels so that, so that this board can be confident.
Yeah.
And, and yes, there is a future salt shed and relationship in the stormwater and all of that, but there is additional area that's not associated with that that you're showing on the plans. And what I'm looking for is the information that justifies the extent of tree removal and clearing.
Sure.
Knowing about the town's joint purpose here and not trying to cut into that at all, but really realistically looking at the site and what this coverage can be and the quality of that coverage.
Yeah, I think that's important because we know that there's definitely going to be three carriers on here. We also know that the carriers are doing more, okay? So they are all hardening their sites with either batteries or generators. They're all, including more equipment because they're leasing more spectrum. So what everyone thought 10 years ago and everyone said, oh, and in the future the antennas will shrink and there'll be less, there'll be less equipment, that really hasn't panned out. It's actually been the opposite. Because of the usage, the data usage, the avalanche of data usage, there's actually more equipment at these sites than we've seen in the past, both to harden them, to make them more resilient and power outages, to be able to support the different frequency bands that they're all operating on. So we can certainly look at the compound, but what I can tell you is also being able to build the facility, get the foundation in there, clear it, be able to maintain it, be able to bring a, either a crane or other facility to be able to maintain the top of the tower. We do need a certain amount of space, so that's important.
So now that you sort of got quickly to what I think is the topic that we ought to be discussing with your help, is you just said that as time goes on, that what you'd think would happen, right? Things get smaller and quicker and cheaper. That hasn't necessarily happened. That actually because of demand and the technology, it means more stuff, right? Where does, where is 5G going to take us in all this? I understand, I understand very little about this technology, small cell stuff, but what I think I heard or read was that it doesn't necessarily replace the need for towers, that 5G actually still needs towers to transmit to the small cells that they're, and that the question I have, is this then going to be additive facilities on top of towers? Extra towers? If, for instance, if one of the carriers, just pick one, T-Mobile decides to do 5G, they already have or will have potentially a tower here. Are they going to need more height or are they going to need more space? Are they going to need another tower? Does it, does it replace the 4G antennas with 5G? How does that all work?
Sure. So a couple of things. It's a bit off topic, but it's important to understand because it does, it does impact on good future planning. So when people say 5G, that's a very loose term because it hasn't really been defined. And it hasn't been defined as far as what exactly the infrastructure that'll be necessary will consist of. But we do know a couple of things about 5G. We know it's the next generation of technology, which seems obvious. But it's completely different than what's going on now. What it's based on, what the theory at least of 5G is based on, is you have to really step back and think about what 3G was. What 3G was is, at 2G you made a phone call. 3G brought you the ability to have data, comingled with your smartphone. And it wasn't really even a smartphone. You probably, at least I did, had a BlackBerry. Okay? And it was great for texting. And that's what 3G brought us. It wasn't so great for web browsing or information services. That's what created 4G. So what 4G essentially has become is LTE technology. So what LTE technology allowed the carriers to do is to be able to handle a much greater amount of capacity of data. Okay? So they were able to use additional frequency bands, but use them more spectrally efficient to be able to handle the avalanche that I was talking about because of these things. Okay? So what does 4G do? Well, what does 5G do compared to 4G? 5G is somewhat of a game changer because it's not, it's not a replacement for 4G. So 4G replaced 3G. All the 3G systems are being shut down. Verizon's announced it's basically twilighting in 2019, for example, the end of 2019. So you'll have to have a 4G-enabled phone. But 5G is different. The idea, the idea of 5G is twofold. One, the pipe that will carry the data will be much bigger, okay? And therefore you'll be able to have vastly greater speeds. In addition to that, you'll have much lower latency, which is the time for the signal to set up and transmit. Okay? And that's important for two reasons. That's important for different technologies. So if you're on a heart monitor, you have to have low latency. If you're driving a driverless car or you're in a driverless car, you have to have very low latency and you have to have a tremendous amount of data. So the theory with 5G is 5G is really more geared to the Internet of Things, where all these different devices will be connected wirelessly to the Internet and that will bring all different types of use groups and uses and different types of services, whether it's medical, whether it's driverless cars, whether it's your refrigerator ordering more orange juice, you know, very mundane things to very, you know, game-changing type of economies that we'll see in the future. But the 5G network is not really designed for your phone service, okay? That's still always going to be 4G and.
Let me just ask a question there.
Sure.
Because from what I understand, 5G has, it's either 1,000 times the capacity or 1,000 times the speed or whatever it is, but it's a, it's a huge leap. Why can't it handle the 4G demand, the 4G transmissions in addition to these other things?
Sure.
So why wouldn't it? Why wouldn't you do that?
You will still have different networks serving different purposes, but the equipment may be what the FCC calls comingled. So you will, you will have, the carriers for 4G are already quote-unquote densifying their networks. They're, they're filling in the coverage gaps, they're putting in more capacity in areas where there's heavy usage. That's called densification. How do they do that? They build more traditional cell sites, whether it's rooftops or towers.
That's why I'm here tonight.
They sometimes do, they sometimes do, particularly in the city or an area that doesn't have a proper site for a macro facility, they'll do what's called a DAS, a distributed antenna system, which is where you were going with that.
No, I just want to know why, why 5G can't do all that. I mean, you're, so go ahead, but I.
The 5G will be a, the 5G technology will basically be a.
You're going to have.
Layer on top of the existing 4G.
Right. You're going to have to have the densification anyway for 5G because you're going to have to have all the coverage that you're, that you're projecting for 4G because you need to cover the base, so.
What will ultimately happen is a little difficult to predict, but what we, what we can look is on what's happened in the past, right? So what we've known in the past is when LTE came out, it was great for people that bought an LTE phone. But the people that had a CDMA 3G phone and still do, they need to make that transition. So getting, so getting the end user to go from an LTE network to whatever the next type of technological network is.
They need the hardware.
That's a transition.
They need to buy the hardware for it.
They need to buy the hardware for it. So whereas your Samsung refrigerator will probably already come with a modem that will be 5G compatible.
Boy, I still can't wait.
Yeah, that's one, that's, that's one that I'm definitely not doing.
Because I'm running out of horseshoes tonight.
But, so that's, that's somewhat of an overview. It's very generalized what I just told you.
Okay, that's fair.
It's somewhat speculative because it's evolving, but the reality is, what you said originally was correct, is that there will still be the need for the macro sites.
So, so if the, if the 5G is not, is not in any time soon, any projected future that you're willing to commit to.
Correct.
Not that you are in the position to commit to anything about that.
Sure.
If you're not the person who makes these decisions, is there, that means that you will not only have to, correct, I'm wrong, you'll not only have to have the 4G antennas and the 4G equipment on the ground, you will also have to have a parallel 5G antenna and equipment on the ground?
Maybe, maybe not. So like, for example, right now, many carriers are still operating 3G and 4G networks and sometimes they could use the same antennas.
You say, maybe, maybe not, but there are 5Gs installations.
No, but it's a, but it's a.
So we must know, right?
No, but, no, no, but it's, but it's a, the way it typically works is what they will do, is they'll have a frequency band. So for example, right now, a lot of the carriers have 700 megahertz, 1,900 megahertz, 2,100 megahertz, 850 megahertz. Over the past four or five years, they converted, when they, when they just got 700, it went in automatically for the first time and it went in as LTE, okay? The 1,900 and the 2,100 might have been converted from CDMA technology to LTE technology. The 850 spectrum they're using for CDMA technology, but once they, once they sunset that technology, they'll re-farm the 850 megahertz frequency band into LTE technology. And what they're doing is they're modifying the antennas, so they're swapping out antennas and they have multi-band antennas. 10 years ago, you didn't see that. You didn't see multi-band antennas.
So you lost me at hello.
Sure.
So, so the question is that there's no way to predict that, you're, I think you're telling me that, that the technology will quickly supplant 4G. And not only that, but that even if it, that you, you can't, you will probably end up, you could end up with parallel hardware, 5G and 4G on any particular site, for instance, this particular site.
Or multipurpose hardware where it's used, you know, and, and remember, these carriers, this is the most important site for me and you right now.
So what would happen, so what would happen if 5G technology arrived like tomorrow and you wanted to fold it into this application? You, I think you're telling me you're not exactly sure what that would look like today because you're not sure what the equipment is that the carriers would need.
It would be, so if it were tomorrow, and it's not, because I spoke to my client and they say, there is no, there is no plan on this particular site in this particular area.
But how would this particular, how would it change?
What would, what would happen? And this is why it's a timing issue, right? So if, if tomorrow, they were ready to deploy 5G on a new site, they would build it into the design, okay? So they would say, whatever we need to do, we will build it into the design. Now, if the site's already built.
Of course they do.
And they have to swap out an antenna, that's a different, they may say, we might have to add an antenna or we may have to swap an antenna.
Of course they build it in the design. The question is, would the design be, how different would that design be?
It would still, it would still need, so no matter what the technology, it needs three main components, sometimes four. It needs an antenna, it needs a line from the antenna to the equipment, and then it needs, and then from the equipment, it needs power and fiber optic or telco service.
Yeah, but that's.
So it really will come down to whether it's 5G, 4G, 3G, or 10G, it will still need an antenna and the antenna manufacturers will come up with the solution. And the solution right now has been, they are using multi-band antennas. So they are using antennas that carry multiple different frequency bands.
But that's like saying that if you want to go down the road in a vehicle, you know, the vehicle's got to have tires and it's got to have a steering wheel, it's got to have a motor.
That's exactly, that's exactly right.
But there are different vehicles, right?
Absolutely.
You could go down in a big truck or you could go down in a, in a, you know, in a small car. So the question is, is the, would the 5G application look more like a big truck than like a small car?
No, I can't answer that question because they haven't, they haven't designed it yet.
I think one of the things that Sabrina brings up later on in her memo is this issue on 5G and looking for the applicant to provide us at least with some information, background information along the same questions that Tom is asking, you know, what would it look like? What do we have to be concerned with? What happens in terms of obsolescence of the 4G? One of our concerns is carriers have this habit of leaving stuff there forever until it falls down. So we would like to know what happens with 5G. And I think this was Sabrina.
Yeah, I just want to be honest with you.
That's what she was going to.
I want to be honest with you. We don't have those answers. It's not, I know we're hearing about it in the news so much.
Right.
Because it's a marketing thing. You see that one carrier put, you know, a 5GE on their phone and another carrier sued them because they said it wasn't really 5G. The reality is, is that, I spoke to T-Mobile directly, I spoke to their top people, they don't have the plans yet. They don't have something that they're rolling out to be able to give. So anything I give you, so first of all, it's not part of the application, so it's speculative, but more importantly, anything I gave you could be misleading because we don't know. We don't have, we don't have an answer to that.
Well, that's, back to the answer, I don't think it's misleading. I think it's important to us because we would want to know in terms of what level of co-location we might be looking at. What does it mean? It might mean that, your answer, the answer might be, we don't know and probably nothing. That's fine, but we would want to have that information, it seems to me, in our file. That's what I think Sabrina was asking for.
And you'll say, you'll say to me, Sabrina, it's five trees. You know, we should plan for it versus not plan for, planning for it because we don't know. That's the point. And, and that's the information I want the board to have so they understand that they're making good decisions and you're getting what you need.
Sure.
And if we're talking about one or two trees within this clearing area and it's going to make movement of your crane easier, that's what they need to know.
Sure.
So, so I understand that you don't have the answer for your particular carriers. You know, I understand that. But to say that this is the, I don't know whether you're saying this, but it sounds like you're saying that this is not knowable. And with respect to this particular site, I know it's not knowable. And I'm not trying to make it about this application, because it's not about this application, but about the technology in general. And it is knowable with regard to the technology because they're building these things.
Well, they're building, so T-Mobile's, T-Mobile's is not.
I'm not talking about your carriers. I'm talking about the industry is building these things. I mean, they're being built in China. This stuff is being built.
And, and that's the point, is that it's, its antenna is aligned and its equipment and it will fit.
Cities around this country, they're building.
And it will fit in the, and it will fit in the footprint of what we're proposing. So we've, so remember, one of the benefits here is that Homeland Towers.
Footprint is, is really, to me, footprint is the least of the issues.
Well, the form factor. So would, one of the benefits of having Homeland Towers is that they're the tower developer. So they have an agreement with each of the carriers that goes on their tower. The way their agreement works is that they provide a certain space, both at the base and on the tower, and they provide a certain specification to allow a certain loading so that way they can buy the tower for a certain amount. And, and the carriers, when they lease that space, they build in reasonably foreseeable real estate.
No, I understand, I understand all that. Okay. I'm sorry.
No, I wish I had a better answer.
No, I, and I appreciate.
That's the frustration.
You're not in the position to have one.
Sure.
So it's frustrating to us because I think, I feel like I'm at the mercy of a technology and a federal prerogative that is going to come again, marching through our town and towns and cities all over the country and saying, I'm sorry, you have to do this, you don't have a choice.
We understand.
And so it's, I think that it's important, I think it, for me, it's important sitting up here to actually understand what's coming because maybe there are ways in which we can prepare ourselves for it, to be sort of helpful for our community in ways in which it can be done more with less impact. And if we don't get ahead of it, stuff is going to happen, I'm afraid, things are going to happen to us that we don't know about because we don't know about it.
I think the reality is that the change from a land use perspective will not affect the towers. The towers are being built to support the antennas, the cables and the ground equipment. The, where the change may or may not come for a place like Newcastle, will be whether carriers densify their networks to build small cells within the right-of-way. And that's been, and that's been, you know, municipalities had until yesterday to change their codes to include objective standards in the right-of-way. The vast majority of municipalities haven't done that.
Right.
Okay? So that's, that's where the land use change will be. The towers, as you mentioned before, will still be necessary and even with those nodes in the right-of-way, they all go back to a central location, which is usually a tower site anyway.
Okay, right.
That's where, from a land use perspective, your focus probably ought to be.
You've been very helpful, thank you.
Okay. Sabrina, next paragraph.
I, I think that you guys should probably focus on notice of intent and.
Yep.
Do your notice of intent.
And then just wait for the information to come back in?
Exactly, exactly. And, and as a general statement, I think that the comments that have come from the outside consultants, the radio frequency consultant, as well as the visual consultant, have been to make sure that the information is documented, that the photo simulations are actually representative, you know, when, when he was doing his, his analysis and checking radii of, you know, the scales are off. You know, really make sure that your documents and your documentation is there for the town so that we can review it and endorse it. He did not think that there would be a huge visual impact, but he needs the correct information to reflect what he is reading versus what the figures are showing.
Did he participate in the balloon test? Was he hired at that point?
He received, he received the results. He was not driving around during the balloon test, but he, he was, he reviewed the plans and the areas that.
I think all of us drove around and.
Correct.
Participated in that, with the exception of Dick, because I did, I did his locations.
Correct.
But I don't know what we want to do with that information.
Well, the applicant was required to do a visual resource analysis, which is reviewed by the visual consultant. And one of the things he noted is that there wasn't consistency with the actual pictures with the, with the pole, with the monopole overlaid in it. It wasn't in the same location, you know? He wants the information based on what, in the written word, to be comparable with the figures.
Yeah, just, just explain that. So we do the balloon, it's required by your code and it's good for people to go out and see the balloon. When we do the renderings, we do it more accurately than the balloon with, so that's why the tower is in the exact right spot. And in many cases, when you look at the photographs, the tower's higher than the balloon because the balloon may shift a little bit. But at that particular point, you know, it's up for a long period of time, many hours, it gives a good general location of the height and the location. But when we actually do the rendering, we use computer modeling to nail the exact height But when we actually do the rendering, we use computer modeling to nail the exact height and location and space. So that's, and we'll, and I think what, I think what the consultant was, was asking for us to explain that that is in fact what was done, which is what his assumption was.
Right.
So we can certainly do that.
Right. And he had some other comments that they have to adhere to, you know, it's a matter of crossing the.
Anything else that was really salient that we need to mention at this point? Steve and Bob, you've issued detailed memos as well.
I had a comment with ST1, but I had discussions with their engineer and the rest of the fine. The only thing that was incomplete was really number one in this steep slopes.
Yep.
Other than that, there are technical issues, which I believe they can address.
We agree.
I have a question. It appears, looking at the photos and everything, that the photos were taken not on any private property and that it was, it was not possible to get on a private property or that wasn't part of what you were intending to do? Because I could see a lot of houses that were down a slope a little bit more that, oh, there's no problem there. But they're actually, they could be. And so I've got like eight of them or ten of them.
Well, I, I can tell you that we, we pinpointed the location before. I know your staff had looked at it, we all agreed on the locations. But in general, unless someone invites us on their property and gives us specific permission, customary processes to take it from the, from the public property out front.
Right. And that's what we, that's what I did when I did the drive-by, I, you know, and to Dick's point, looking from the front yard of a house that is downs, you know, where the property's downslope toward the area is a very different feel. Turns out I went on one property and it turned out it was a, one of our planning board applicants who's here very, very often. And he came out and asked me what I was doing, but I knew it was him, so I figured he owed me. And, but other than that, I, I looked at the road all the time. It was, again, there could be some real significant discrepancies.
Yeah, like I said, they got about eight, yeah, where I think that you would have a different answer.
Yeah, I had the same, the same concern on my drive. The, the roads tend to be on ridge lines and then the houses are on the ridge line, but the backyards of the houses go downslope and the balloon's out there somewhere. And they have a different view of it from their house than it's possible to get from the road. And so I, I don't know what to do about that except be sure to notify those people specifically that this is something, if they have any concerns, they should let us know. Or, or ask for, you know, access to their yard, which is, I'm not sure, something that, you know, we need to do, but it doesn't want to go unrecognized.
We did send out those notices in advance as well.
Yes.
All right, but we don't want to, go ahead.
Is it possible to create that? I mean, there was, in the, in the visual analysis report, there was a lot of introductory material about how you use computer modeling to render the, you know, the terrain, the trees and everything. Is it possible to do renderings that show the, this little, you know, the terrain at the back of those houses?
Not without a photograph. So we would, we would need the photograph.
Right.
Unless we did a, unless we did a sightline, the problem with sightlines is you're, you're assuming, you're assuming what the tree height is, but more importantly, when we did the balloon test, was in leaf-off condition. So I know that there were a number, a number of properties where we showed where the balloon would be, and in many cases, it was over a thousand feet. And when you look through, when you, when you look through that, that level of tree density, even in a leaf-off condition, it's not visible, even with leaf-off. So I think that's documented a lot throughout the report.
All right. So the thought, though, that this, this may create some problems towards the back end of this whole process, which then would potentially constitute a delay, I'm suggesting you consider what we did at another site over near Armagh where we set up a time-limited tree bank for those offended that, you know, what it looks like and could come forward and plant trees and there would be a bank for that.
We can certainly take that into consideration and I, I think, I think more importantly goes back to what you originally said. I think the quicker we can submit some materials and get the public hearing scheduled and see if, in fact, anyone that was notified of the balloon test actually comes out and has an issue.
Right. Okay.
So I think the quicker we get out of the public hearing, the better.
Could you, just for a second, I know we're going to probably go deeper into this as, as you come back, but real quickly, ConEd co-location opportunity, I guess, lack thereof. I know that up near Amsterdam Park, there was a property owner who, is a property owner who has, is right, abuts the ConEd right-of-way. And he accepted a, I don't know, was that one of your towers up there?
Yeah.
Hogs Cross Road?
Hogs Cross Road. Yeah, that's mine.
Okay. So, and that seemed to work very well because it's close to the big infrastructure we have to have anyway.
Sure.
But I, we noticed that it wasn't actually put on ConEd property. Does ConEd just say, no way?
ConEd says, no way. ConEd says, no way, to put a new tower on their property. But we are abutting on the one sheet, and we'll do a better job of delineating it, we're abutting the ConEd property with the ConEd towers. They are right next to us on the adjacent property.
And in the past, we actually have approved, I think, placements of an antennae on the towers, the ConEd towers themselves, but I understand there's a problem with getting access.
It's a disaster. Yeah, it's a disaster because we're limited on how much equipment we could have up there. We have to go through a whole ConEd process and then a whole PSC process, which has now been implemented, just to do any type of modifications.
Maintenance.
Maintenance, changing of equipment, as we mentioned, as I was talking about before, that's the whole game now, is changing the antennas to be able to keep up with the technology. And it's, it's become infeasible to be able to do that on the ConEd towers. So that's, that's the big problem. And we've, you know, we just had one approved in New Yorktown, same thing, tower's right across the street from the ConEd tower. And it makes sense because, as you just mentioned, you're somewhat co-locating the infrastructure in the same location as opposed to, you know, an area where there's no such infrastructure. So it does make sense.
Have you ever explored the, the possibility of, I mean, you need to get access to these, to your facility, and so therefore you need to have at some point access to a public road.
Correct.
And you lease, you lease property in easements or whatever in order to be able to do that on private property or municipal property. Is there, have you ever thought about actually using a ConEd right-of-way to get access to a tower which is located adjacent to the ConEd? Not on their property, but like this one, right next to their property.
Actually, it's funny you ask that. We have a site that we're, that we're developing up in the town of DeGrange and it's a great piece of property because it's out in the middle of nowhere. The, there's a town, there's a town paper road that connects from a regular town road to the Taconic. So the DOT will not allow us to use the access from the Taconic because they don't want to open up new access. The paper road onto the town road is a billy goat path. It's never been developed and it's, and it's literally drops off like this. Our landlord, where we're proposing for the tower, happens to own the parcel right next to the private roads, and we're putting an easement through there, and we've got it. But that's still a difficult spot. And we actually approached, we actually approached ConEd because they have a ConEd access drive and they, and their, their response was, we generally don't allow that. And a lot of the reason.
It's always no. The first answer is always, doesn't matter what the question is, it's always.
No matter how much we ask, it's more than just the first one. And a lot of it, a lot of it does, a lot of it does have to have, it does have to do with two things. One, 16 years ago, this coming August, when we had the blackout, and the only reason I remember that day is my son was born, so the black, and it was my parents' 50th anniversary. So it was 16 years ago, this August, and if you remember, the blackout was because of the tree trimming and the squirrel and it burnt out up in Canada and it knocked out half the East Coast, right? So when they build these facilities, one of the things the PSC said is that now you have to go out there every like three months and cut any of the weeds and you can't plant any landscaping around it. It's, it's become a big problem from just that maintenance standpoint. And the second thing, quite frankly, is terrorism. So anytime when you're on one of these remote ConEd right-of-ways and you show up unannounced, it's a big problem. So.
Yeah, but that, okay, that's.
It's just, it's, that's why their first answer is no.
Yeah, both of those are, to me, facetious answers, but that's okay.
That's the reality.
Well, I can just say, in relation to this application, if that's what you're referring to. I'm sorry, I'm Vincent Xavier, the regional manager for Homeland Towers.
Thank you.
If you ask that question in relation to this application, I actually did go over and look over the cliff to see if that was possible. I think Steve will probably be able to attest that there is no way to access this from the ConEd right-of-way in, in any way.
I, I'm not, I know the area too.
Okay.
You can see it from Getney Park, the whole topography and everything.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure I covered it. I actually did look at that to see if that was an option.
Right.
And it's not, so.
But, okay, I just meant generally, so, for other sites.
Okay. Good. Any other questions at this point?
Not on this piece.
Okay. If not, why don't we tackle the, oh, Steve has.
Most of my comments are minor and technical, dealing with wetlands and trees, but there's a couple of policy recommendations. And the first one is dealing with the wetlands. When we, you know, looked at the site, about 50% of the proposed, you know, building footprint is within the buffer area. And, you know, based on existing conditions, proposing to remove some, addition, you know, quite a few trees as well. But the one advantage in that area is that it's a pretty mature canopy of the existing trees, you know, so similar to when ConEd did their Millwood, you know, substation upgrades and, you know, Millwood Firehouse, looking at whether it would be, from a functional standpoint, whether it would be beneficial to do wetland mitigation at the specific site versus choosing a, a more public, you know, facility that would make, you know, more sense. It's a very isolated area that's not open or accessible to the public.
Right.
So the recommendation I have from a wetland standpoint would be to consider off-site mitigation. And the logical place within, you know, that watershed area is Getney Park. And it would be consistent with other, you know, applications that we've dealt with similar circumstances where there's isolated conditions. I'm not sure whether it would really provide a significant functional value.
And you also recommended after the trees as well.
And I've recommended for trees as well, you know, because with the canopy, I mean, there will be some opportunities, I'm not sure how much, you know, we really would have to be, you know, kind of evaluating it once, you know, the construction starts to see how feasible it would be, how many trees you could put back, you know, on the site. And with the same situation here, there will be a deficit, I mean, that goes to the tree bank. The one recommendation I have is to earmark, you know, the donation, if that's the route that it takes to be restricted to use, be used in the Millwood area. And so that would benefit the immediate, you know, subject, you know, property.
Right.
So there's two policy things to think about, you know, as, as the application goes forward.
Jennifer, does the code enable us to do either of these or both of these?
So.
These thoughts?
For wetlands off-site, wetlands mitigation, absolutely. That's specifically set forth in the code that onsite is preferred, but if onsite is not possible, then you can look to off-site. For the tree, locating the trees off-site, I'll have to double-check under our newly adopted tree law to see if that's allowed. With respect to earmarking the tree bank dollars specifically for the Millwood area, I think the planning board can recommend that to the town board, but ultimately that is a town board decision as to where and how to spend those monies. But I think it's a good recommendation to make to the town board.
Okay. Good.
I have one tree comment, a minor one. I noticed that the property line goes right through a 30-inch oak, which I don't think we have yet gotten, whether that's a good, bad or indifferent tree. But if it's a good tree, they can save a lot of tree replanting just by saving that 30-inch oak.
I have some concerns, and one of my comments was that I identified several trees based on their plan that I think could be protected or preserved, which would greatly reduce, you know, the number of trees that would have to come out.
So the projected, I don't know where this is in the town board's sort of physical improvement, capital improvement schedule, but for the salt storage facility, which is going to abut this facility, you're putting all on town land, right?
Correct.
You are improving the property, so to speak, you're putting the road in, the access road in?
Correct.
You're building that?
Correct.
And that access road would then also be used for trucks to get up to the salt storage facility?
Correct.
Right. And so in, in, I don't know, with respect to that kind of traffic, carrying that kind of material coming up a road which is built by this applicant, does the future potential use of that property for that sort of industrial use, which abuts the wetland?
Right.
Which is upstream from the wetland because the topography takes you right down into the wetland? Is any of that, should any of that be under consideration in this application?
I would probably defer to Jennifer on that because I, I mean, my understanding is they're leasing, you know, the property from the town, you know, but I don't know what the arrangement is in terms of responsibility for, you know, the, providing the funds or the, analyzing, you know, doing the environmental analysis for, you know, a future application.
Do we have to wait for that application to address those issues?
I don't know because it's a town operation.
I think I need more information about that proposal in order to give advice.
They are separate, neither one of them, though, it's not segmentation because neither one of them are dependent on the other. The.
It wasn't a suggestion of segmentation, I just, I'm worried about it.
No, I'm just making sure that that's understood, that it's not segmentation.
Yeah, but your comment makes sense. I mean, there will be potential impacts from having a salt shed operation right in.
All of a sudden, you know, the road is already there, you know, we don't need a permit to do that, whether that road and, and all of it's designed for the, the future purpose.
And I don't know whether.
And the drainage as well.
Right. And I don't know whether that could be tied into this application or not.
Isn't the town also a co-applicant on this application because of the landlord, owner of the land? So maybe that gives us the, the ability to look a little bit further into the future than we would normally look in one of these applications.
Yeah, there might be some split between, you know, who pays for what tree or whatever.
But we're responsible, we're, what we did is we designed the road to a specification they asked us to during the leasing process. They will obviously have to tap off of that, but nothing associated with, the salt shed is associated with us.
Right. Okay. Good.
So it would be good to see what those conditions are, obligations are on the construction of the, of the road.
We can submit the lease, we don't have to.
Yeah, for, for Bob to look at, for us to understand if it's actually designed for the projected traffic for the salt storage facility, whether that's going to work.
Sure, I mean, correct me if I'm wrong, I think, I think, weren't you involved in that original process?
That was probably Mr. Marshall. Yeah, I would think so.
It's pretty, pretty good design on the roadway though.
Well, no, no, again, I don't, I don't look at the design on the roadway, but I think that the board is making the point that depending on the future use, if it's going to be used for a salt shed and we're putting in a road, we want to make sure we have enough protections for the wetland, from a water quality perspective.
Drainage also, right.
Yeah, that's what I mean. It's not just proper drainage, it's proper drainage for salt in relation to.
The, the, the salt, the salt shed is, whatever the town has to do for the salt shed, we agree the town has to do with the salt shed.
We understand that, but we, we have an issue with, or a concern, shall we say, that we need to take a look at that too. I mean, as Sabrina just said.
I, I think, with all due respect, I think there is a limit, though, to what's speculative and what's another project and what's this applicant's responsibilities.
Right. But if we're talking about disturbance area and needing to make sure that there's enough area to accommodate what this is going to be used as, then we need to understand that.
So it's my, it's my guess, if you're leasing, and I'm not, I'm not going to get involved in these negotiations between, you know, you and the town, but if, if you are building the road to their specifications, seems to me that, on their property, seems to me that you should be or could be building the drainage structures.
No, that's not correct, though. That's not correct. So we.
What's not correct? You're not building drainage structures?
No, not for the salt shed, of course not. We are building.
No, wait, wait. I didn't say that. Just let me finish, all right? That you are building the drainage structures for your use, right, on their property according to specifications that are approved by this, by the engineering staff of the towns.
Correct.
Right. So if the town has the, has the, the leverage to say, this is how you have to build the road, why can't the town have the leverage to say, this is how you have to build the drainage?
Because we already negotiated the agreement and the agreement's already signed.
Well, that's a pretty good reason. This is why we need to see these things before they get signed.
We're happy to submit a copy of the agreement. We have no problem with that and you'll see.
Well, we can get it anyway.
Yeah, I know, that's what I'm saying. But you'll, you'll see what, all we did is we just, we just changed the road a little bit. I mean, this isn't, it's not like we're building a super highway in.
No, no, that's not the point. Whether, how much you change is not the point. The point is that there's a precedent for the town saying, this is how you have to build it.
Sure, but that was part of the arms-length negotiation, so.
Okay. Good. All right. Is there a motion to adopt the, or send out the notice of lead agency, intend to be lead agent?
Before the motion, I just have one comment on the notice of intent. We spoke earlier about the potential for there to be a steep slopes permit involved, so I just think that in the second sentence of the notice of intent, we should mention that the applicant may also require a steep slopes permit issued by the point of...
Good point.
...this notice.
Okay. As amended, is there a motion to issue the notice of intent to be lead agency?
Some moves.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you for your time today.
Very good, thanks.
Thank you.
You had easy ones, you had all the ones down by the bike paths, by the way, those were significant, I was...
I'm not sure in the... Is it that... Okay, now I...
Yeah, it's there.
Right, there would be a public...
But it's...
It's not been said yet. Okay.
Superficial.
Didn't we?
Yes. And thank you again for doing it. It's not as... I looked from Taza, by the way, they gave me three or four, and it was like 200 feet away, and I said, "I can do this." We have different stories. Okay. We move now to our next item on the agenda, and this is a presentation, this is to bring us up to speed on Chappaqua Crossing, SG Chappaqua A and B LLC, East Village, at 480 Brentford Road. We've been talking about this for a while, but this is, I guess, a chance now for the applicant to bring the board up to speed. There have been many conversations with staff, and through those conversations, I think that there's been some distilling of some direction on some key issues. So this is a presentation to bring the board up to, up to speed. So here we are. And we have this looming pile of paper here, which is...
And more to come.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is Mark Weingarten, I'm a partner in the law firm of Delphalo, DeNellan, Weingarten, Weizen, Weidicker, and it's my pleasure to be here representing SG Chappaqua A and B LLC and its contract vendee, Toll Brothers, Inc., in connection with the mixed-use project known as Chappaqua Crossing, and specifically the subdivisions and site plan which are taking shape in the final phase of the project known as, of the piece of the project known as the East Village. As you were aware, and as the chairman just mentioned, after months of collaboration between the applicant, its professionals, town staff, some even individual members of your board, the town board, we filed revised drawings for the East Village Site Development Plan, as well as a supporting environmental analysis, which I believe you've just, just received now. You will hear shortly from Andy Tong, Dibneetong Schwabey, our planners and engineers, and Yvonne Steinberg from his office who's here as well, who will walk you through your planning plan as well. And as we said, we have an environmental analysis that we've also filed. Our goal tonight is to acquaint you with the plan as it is currently exists, and also to try to come to form some type of consensus on the major portions of the plan, because once that occurs, and we hope we are there, the next step in this process will be for us to have to file a petition with the town board for all sorts of relief that's going to have to be done, some which is cleanup from things that have been done in the past, some which will be activated by the changes that have been made in the plan that are before you. But until we go ahead and we finalize what essentially this plan is going to look like, it's very difficult to go move that forward. So that is, that is what our intention is. I'll just go very briefly through the history, because I know you're acquainted with it. As you're well aware, the property is at 480 Brentford Road, it's 114 acres between the Soreno Parkway and Route 117, and it's formerly known as the Reader's Digest Site. Briefly on the history, which brings us here today, is in April of 2011, following the adoption of a finding statement, the town board approved the commercial rezoning of the site from primarily BRO 20, Research and Office Business Districts, to a misused commercial residential site with a new 30.6-acre multifamily planned development district, which we call the East Village. That plan allowed for 662,000 square feet in the commercial district, with 111 units, 20 of them affordable in the East Village. The following year, we, the applicant petitioned to amend those approvals and create an office, park, retail overlay district and map it to the site. This would allow certain retail uses, such as the Whole Foods, and increase the East Village from 30.6 acres to 31.2 acres. The following year, the town board adopted a supplemental finding statement, which essentially analyzed and would permit the substitution of the retail component in place of some of the underutilized existing commercial space, and a number of traffic mitigation measures were adopted. In May 2015, after a series of interim steps, the town board amended the zoning map to rezone 19.1 acres from the BRO 20 to OPR, allowing the retail and approve the retail PDCP. The town board also increased the multifamily district, the East Village, to 31.2 acres at that point. In the second half of 2015, and the three years that followed, they primarily series upon a, a series of approvals and amendments focusing on the retail, commercial uses, and the required traffic improvements. They also shifted and increased the number of AFFH units from 20 to 28. They increased it and they moved it over to the 200 building from the East Village, and they required certain traffic mitigation measures. And of course, we spent a lot of time last year talking to you about the temporary certificates of occupancy. The current approval is as follows: 620,000 square feet of commercial, which consists of 120,000 square feet of retail, 500,000 of office, 28 AFFH units in the 200 building, and 91 townhomes. Forty-four percent of the office is completed and occupied, 28 of the AFFH units, all of them are completed and occupied, 91,500 square feet of the 100... Can I ask one quick question?
Sure.
In the 200 building, is the total number of apartments 28?
No. It's the total number of affordable units are 28.
Right, but don't we have more than that? We have market?
Oh, many more.
Yeah, so what's the total number of, that's been approved?
You know, the total number is 26, right? 66, 66 or 63?
Yeah, I have it written down. I can grab it for you.
I think that's a pertinent number, especially as we start talking about bedroom counts, you know?
Yeah, we, we'll have all of that for you, and it's also in the environmental analysis. So, but again, the, the affordable are all built, the 200 building is built out, the retail, it's 91,550 square feet of the 120,000 is built out, and the residential and the East Village, as you know, we are processing. In September of 2017, we first sought and filed plans for site development approval for the East Village. As we mentioned, we've been talking about collaborating with the staff, et cetera, and since then, there have been six submissions, okay? We believe our plan is in conformance with the approved 2015 MFPD PDCP, and as I mentioned earlier, the goal tonight, once we go through and walk through the plan, as we've mentioned previously, to give you slight understandings, we have a couple of components to this. There's two subdivision, one large subdivision, a master subdivision, so that has to be finalized as to where the outer boundaries are. So for example, when we finalize the auditorium parcel and where that boundary line is, then we can go in for our master subdivision. We then have the, all the 92 parcels that are associated, because we are subdividing the townhomes on the East Village, and we have to also do those subdivisions. We have the, the townhomes and the clubhouse over on that, over on that parcel, and that also has to be done. We can't finalize that until we know exactly where the buildings are going to be located, where the roads are, where the driveways are, et cetera. So those are the types of things and components, and of course, when we went through that, and I'll mention it as it is in the environmental analysis, and Andy will be going through it specifically, the major components that we're looking to get consensus on and move forward, that we've had a lot of conversation about with the staff and now with you, has been site grading, the berms, we've talked about the appropriate elevation of the loop road, circulation and parking, including the roadway widths and the driveway lengths, townhomes and clubhouse design, we have Toll Brothers here, James Fitzpatrick is here from Toll's Brothers, the regional president. We use their market analysis and their understanding to come up with what we believe a plan that will be marketable to allow us to achieve what's necessary to go forward with a successful project. I will mention that Felix is here as well, which I don't think I did earlier. And of course, as I mentioned before, the auditorium parcel, which is critical to us in order to finalize our plan and move forward, and critical to you, because going forward, you want to make sure it's something that you can use.
I have a quick question now for you. And I don't mean to be argumentative, but for the record, you indicate that you think that this is in conformance with what's been approved, and yet, you're coming before us, and the reason you're here is because you're really looking for a lot of relief from us and also the town board.
Correct.
So when you say that, are you saying it's not really in conformance, but in general, I mean, at 40,000 feet, it's, you think it's conformed, but it really isn't, because that's why you're here?
We think it's in conformance with the preliminary development concept plan that was originally approved, in general concept. Yes, there's going to be certain relief, but we believe the spirit and the, and the of the approval has been carried out in this East Village. Yes, there is, and we will go through, and we can even talk about it at the end, or we'll, we'll have a discussion later, whether that'll be point of a joint board meeting at the, whatever the next stage is. The specific types of relief that we will need to endeavor in order to go through this. But I think the first thing we'd like to do is have Andy take you through the plans, go through it, and see if we're kind of on the same page with the, again, the major components of what we're suggesting. Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Mark.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board.
Good evening. For those of you who don't know, Andy was recently appointed to the Brier Cliff.
Reappointed.
Reappointed to the planning board, so...
Congratulations.
Thank you. God bless you.
No, we don't say congratulations.
They're going to keep reappointing you until you get it right. That's why I'm still here.
At least they didn't make me chairman this time. Good evening. As Mark mentioned, we have had the opportunity recently, through working with staff, to consolidate our ideas based on the work that we've done with your board and staff over the past year, and taking two cues, at least two cues that go through shortly from the December meeting, and questions that were raised there, to put them all together and to produce the two documents that you have before you. One is a full set of site plan drawings, putting all the pieces together that we've been discussing into what we believe, I'll reiterate what Mark said, in concept conforms to the, to, I'll call it the spirit of the MFPD PDCP. There are some detail changes that we will be requesting to the town board in conjunction with this site plan. And then second, the binder is the updated environmental analysis that tracks each of the topic studied during the DEIS and FEIS for the East Village, and compares this plan against the MFPD, the approved Plan Development Concept Plan. So it's taken us a little time to compile that into one set of organized documents. So Matt, if you can go to the first slide. So this is a, this is the grading plan, and it's just indicative of the plans. Instead of showing you 50 sheets at once, I just thought the grading plan, which will use kind of to guide us through this discussion. This plan is reflective of all the changes and the evolution of the plan since our initial submission. Tracking with that, next slide please, is the environmental assessment. This is just, you can't read it, but this is a comparative table with the quantitative impacts from the plan, tracked in blue. The blue columns are the PDCP, the two columns on the right are the plan that you have before you in plan form and documented. Next slide, please. So in terms of the comparison between the current plan, which is shown in blue, and the December 2015 PDCP, shown in red, the plans are, are quite similar in overall footprint. The main road, Road A, which extends through the center of the site, through the center of the east parcel, from the east entry drive to the loop road on the north, I think this, all right, from the east entry drive to the loop road on the north, that's remained in place, as has the basic configuration of the townhomes as they're located along what we now call common service drives to provide access to the rear of the units. The one change in the plan that is obvious is at the north end, and I'll describe that in a little more detail in a moment. That's resulted primarily from a number of changes that have happened in and around the auditorium. The auditorium will be subdivided into a separate parcel to be transferred to the town along with the building. That will be a part of the subdivision, and that's also an action that we're going to ask the town board to do in terms of clearing up that the, the use of the auditorium can occur in, in this zone, under these provisions, with access not from a public street, but through an internal roadway. So that process of, of refining the site plan for the auditorium has been ongoing in parallel with our site plan discussion, and we believe we're at a point where we're nearly there, town staff and the town board are reviewing that at the moment, and we've shown in this plan, one of, one of the two options that we believe works, works best.
So Andy, in this particular lineup here, what was happening here? Maybe just briefly?
I'm about to show you.
Oh, okay, oh.
This is just, this is 40,000 feet, I'm going to get down to 20,000 feet and then come in for land.
I can't wait.
Oxygen is...
Right.
It's like those glasses they give you, 3D movies.
We have 3D glasses, and they all come and coalesce into one. That's actually what I was thinking, too, earlier this afternoon, when I was looking at it.
This is why you're on the planning board.
Yes, yes. Okay, so, next slide, please. So as Mark said, I, in reviewing our notes and looking at all the things that we've talked about, I think that we see three categories, and certainly there may be things outside the categories, but, but in terms of trying to put together a presentation tonight, the first category has to do with site grades, category of topics that we've discussed, site grades in terms of the relationship of buildings to roads adjacent, the cut and fill on the site, the height and location of site walls, the east fill slope to the east of the, to the east of the townhomes, and finally, the stormwater management measures, which have to be located in and around all of these grading changes as we make them to meet both the town's requirements and the DEP requirements. Second topic is circulation and parking. That speaks to the internal roads, emergency access provisions, townhome driveways and parking supply. The third topic is then about buildings, townhomes and the clubhouse, townhome design, their features, the number of bedrooms, the addition of basements, and then the clubhouse itself. So what I'll do is I'll step through all of those, looking at the plan.
Andy, if I may, real quick. So the way you're presenting it tonight, is that similar format to your environmental analysis, or are you...
Well, the environmental analysis, there's an introduction to the environmental analysis that talks about those three groups.
Okay.
But then the analysis itself starts with land use and zoning, natural features, the same way, tracking the environmental findings.
Okay, thank you.
Yes. So two changes that have occurred since our December meeting with you, at that time, if you go back a, for a moment, the chairman asked us to consider, as we were looking at this road on the west side of the East Village, and the height of that road as you viewed it from the loop road, what would have happened if the loop road were to be raised in the center area so that the effective height of the wall on the east, to the east of it would be lowered? So we took a look at that. And the next slide shows in plan and, and section, and for the plan and profile, what that would look like. So this is the, the loop road, beginning from, between the connection with Road A that leads up into the balance of the East Village, and this is actually the former driveway on the north side of the auditorium. So between those two points, which is here and here, we looked at what happens if we take out that little dipsy-doodle that occurs in the road today? And instead of going down to go up, we just go down, move the low point over slightly, but it becomes, in terms of everybody that drives on the loop road, it's a little bit smoother travel line rather than, than going up. What it also does is it raises the loop road in the center area up to about 10 feet, a maximum of 10 feet. So it starts small, one to two feet, rises to 10 feet, and then back down to one to two feet. And the grade, the resulting grade is about a 4% grade, so it's in the context of this overall site, it's fairly closer to level than the, than the slope that goes down now.
Yeah, and it's better, it's more safe.
It is, it's easier to drive. What that results in is the raising of the road here, the lowering of the wall on this side, but it does, because there's a parking lot very close on the west side that's already in place, it would require about 210 feet of wall on the downhill side to raise the road above the parking lot. So if we look at that in section, so here's our small plan with three cross-sections, one, two, and three going top to bottom. You can see at the, at the bottom, I'm sorry, going, going top to bottom, right. Low two-foot wall here on the parking lot side, the road is raised about five feet in this location. In the center of section, it's now raised about 10 feet. The wall on the East Village side is now about eight feet, eight and a half feet, and there's a similar wall, about nine feet at its highest point, on the west side alongside the parking lot. And by the time we get to the north end, we're back down, back down to grade. If we look at that, we prepared then a visual simulation, looking back from near the front of the auditorium, looking north, you can see, and it's difficult to do in this long perspective, but you can get a sense that the road is going down. You see the road going down here, and the height of the wall adjacent here, and it actually seems to work, that dip is taken out, the wall's shorter, now eight to eight and a half feet on this side, and there is a wall on the left side or the west side, but it's not really visible from the, the road because it backs up on the parking lot side. So that, that seems to way, to be a way to solve at least two situations, one, the height of the road on the, on the east side, and also just the general dip that's in the , of the road today.
Downside, though, is we're losing a couple of trees here.
Yes, there's two, two oak trees on the far side here that were replaced, not by the same heightened trees, but that would be replanted there, and that's, that shows the, those trees being lost because of the grading to, in the raising of the road, that area is right adjacent in the, in the lawn area.
I, sorry. It seems to me that this is a, I think it's a really great solution. I, I, this, the profile of the existing road is something that really pertains to an earlier use of the property. And there actually was an access, I don't want to come to that in a minute, there was an access down here to this parking lot from this road, because...
Here's the...
Right, because this was used for parking for the big building, right, the... the property, and there actually was an access, I don't want to come to that in a minute, there was an access down here to this parking lot from this road.
Here's the, the line.
Because this was used for parking for the big building, right, the Reader's Digest. But now we have a whole new use up here, and it seems to me that this is better because the road relates to the neighborhood rather than being all about this big parking lot dipping down to meet that. I think if we can do this, I think it's great. The other thing it does is it sort of takes the differential in the two elevations and splits the difference, so it softens the whole transition from high to low. The one thing I'd ask you is that if you, one of the things that I think the town board may be trying to achieve is for the auditorium, once you get, once you are dropped off, the person who drops you off in front of the auditorium, in order to get into the parking lot in the existing condition, has to go all the way around down the hill and come back in from the, I guess it's the north end of the office buildings. There was the notion that you could reopen that existing link to the parking lot so it'd be an easy return for somebody to come into the parking lot and park for the, is that possible in this regrading? It seems to me that we've now got a...
Kind of precludes that because you've now raised that 5 feet higher than it was when it connected, or maybe even more than 5 feet at that point of connection.
So it precludes that entry. Is there another way to get into this parking lot without having to go all the way around?
Yeah, with the differential is less.
Not, not really. If you go back, Matt. Back one more. You see where we're, the proximity, this is where the connection used to be.
Right, right.
And now we're raising that, that's about in the middle, so that's close to here, that's 8 to 10 feet. So that, you've gone past, but I may be able, I brought the sketch of the auditorium, and there may be another solution in terms of drop-off that we can look at. But I see your point, that it would have been nice to be able to turn back in, and that was, it's just, in the old parking lot, there was just a curb there, it was a very narrow, narrow separation in recent years. Many years before, there was a connector there, it appears.
So I think this is terrific, but instead of now, it seems to me, that now that I think we've done a lot to soften this road and make it better, but we shouldn't, in order to achieve this other objective, getting into that parking lot, we shouldn't necessarily just take the existing grade of the parking lot as a given. I wonder if that also couldn't be modified into some sort of a part of it, into some sort of a ramp that gets you down from the higher elevation of 5 feet into the parking lot, wherever that occurs? Like, maybe these spaces come out, and there's a way to build a, you know, to regrade it through here so you can get into the parking lot there.
Well, we are in a different site, if you would. The East Village is bounded by the 32 acres, 31.6 acres. We've actually stepped out of the site to adjust the Loop Road through Felix's accommodation and wanting to explore everything possible with you. In terms of that, I think you'd have to, you would lose parking spaces if you were to create another road there. It would be kind of an awkward situation now, you're going up 10 feet and then going back down 10 feet to get to that parking lot.
I thought you said a 5-foot differential there.
Well, it's depending exactly where it is, where you would see the...
But you could move that crossing at a level where the impact is not 5 feet.
It does depend on where you are, so don't pick the highest level because there are...
No, no, I'm just, this is between, so it's between, the wall is between 200 and 400, 2 plus 4, so 2 to 400. I suppose it could be, it's certainly closer to grade this end than it is at this end.
I'm looking at your section, 3 and 1/2 foot high wall in section 1, goes to 9 in section 2, and it disappears in section 3. Section 3, you're kind of far along.
Yeah, that's towards the north end, right?
Yeah, but...
The further north you get, the more challenging it is.
Yeah.
No, section 3 is further north, it's, your Loop Road is almost at grade, right?
Right.
So you can just enter there and come down?
It comes back to grade, but that's not at the parking lot.
Well, what might be interesting...
No, it's not.
The north end is not at the parking lot.
No, it's not, but you can use that land to get into the parking lot. Then you're not going to lose any spaces.
I see, you come down, you bring a road down into the...
Well, even right here at an intersection, which might make it more sensible, too.
Something to work through, I think.
We could look at that, but it's...
We're responsible for circulation for the whole site, and it's got to work.
I understand that. So in combination with that, the west wall and the east fill slope are part of trying to balance the fill and the effect of that fill on the site. And so what we've shown here is a further modification of the fill slope here that is a compromise between the last two things that we looked at in terms of how far the edge of grading extends out. And what we've done here is to continue with a wall in the southern portion of this roadway. And then as we get to the north, we've utilized the balance of the fill to create this fill slope, and thereby retaining some of the trees in the meadow that we've looked at with the planning board and with Steve Coleman, while providing a way to utilize that fill on side rather than to truck it off. So this is a fourth version, if you will, of the wall in combination fill slope on the east side.
This is an important issue, though, because, as we've discussed many times, the fill is really chiefly the result of the basements that are now being developed or proposed. And that is something that might be something we have to discuss in a joint meeting with the town board, because it seems to me that's going to be something that they have, at least I've heard, concerns with. So we'll have to look at that. Can you run through the alternatives in terms of what we looked at on the slope, in terms of what happens to this fill? I mean, again, what was approved was, of course, homes here without basements. Now, we've heard many, many times from the applicants that they need that basements for marketing reasons, et cetera, but certainly what was approved should be looked at as an alternative, and that is, you know, structures on slabs, which was originally approved, and see what that difference is. I think we need to have that, you probably have it from prior applications, but it seems to me, as we look at these things and as the town board looks at it based on our recommendations, we should have that information.
I agree.
We do.
Now, we can look at the deltas. This is all deltas in terms of what happens.
It is, and I can flip to that. We did have, in the prior plan, we did have the fill slope on the east side. We called it a berm at the time, but it was really more, as you can see in the profile, it's not really a berm, which I think of as a hump that goes up and down, but as a fill slope. Now, at that time, it was envisioned as helping to screen the view of the townhomes from Cowton Lane. As we've looked closer at it together with you, we see that the distance and the growth over just the last 10 years of the vegetation in the meadow has served that purpose as well. But there was a berm at that time, and it, the amount of fill hasn't increased with the creation of the basements, but we believe that we've tried to balance all of these things, the amount of fill, the walls, the raising of the Loop Road. I think that that was, you know, trying to spend our efforts in the best way possible to get a best, a balanced solution while achieving as many of our goals as we can. Matt, if you flip to the end of the...
I have an offer.
Yes.
If you're going to use that pointer, maybe we could trade, and we'll just leave them here because it's bouncing the glare right into my eyes.
I'm sorry.
You wouldn't know.
We have special pointers and special film.
This is a no bounce?
It's a no bounce pointer, yes.
You don't have these in Berkeley yet.
I know, and I'm going to have to find your supplier.
Yes.
Thank you.
There's a film on the TV, actually, to prevent the bounce.
Does that bounce to you?
Combined with...
No, it's better, that's fine.
I'm sorry.
No, don't be sorry, you didn't know.
But just to go back to these sketches again, what you're proposing is the preferred, from the applicant's standpoint, is what we're looking at in section B, that cut through, or section C?
Section B and C are in the same...
Same.
Okay.
Okay, just different sections?
Yes.
And that's the preferred...
The wall on the bottom is the lower one, or the section at the bottom, section C is the bottom, and then section B is the top.
Yep.
So keep this one in your mind. So this was what we called the modified 3 to 1, 5 to 1 berm, which is fill slope, which is slightly larger amount of material because we were not raising the Loop Road. The effect of raising the Loop Road uses up some of the fill that would otherwise have gone on the east side. And this was developed in conjunction with Steve Coleman in order to retain as many or more of the meadow trees than we previously had shown in an earlier version of this. So that was one option, and we call that 3 to 1, 5 to 1. So it was shaped more naturalistically, so it blended more into the meadow, and the slope on the downhill side varied from 3 to 1 to 5 to 1. Actually, go up 3 slides. The photos, you might be just below them. So these are the, these trees are indicative of the trees at the lower part of the fill slope that occur in the meadow. They have grown up by themselves over the last umpteen years. Some are in fair condition, some are not so good condition, so we've tried to balance between saving as many of them as we could and replacing others to increase the diversity of habitat and plant material in that meadow.
Okay.
Down, back, there was one more, one more version. Yes, so this is, this is coming down at a 3 to 1 slope right after the roadway, which you can see here, and coming back down to grade. This preserves about 20 more of those trees that you saw in the prior photo, mix of cherries and apples, hemlocks, a couple ashes, but what it does is that it's a little bit more abrupt, in that you come down straight and then you go into the meadow. It also results in about 20,000 yards of fill that has to be trucked off the site. So in terms of cost, that's probably $20 a yard, $400,000, some of which would be used to raise the Loop Road, so that we believe that at the end of the day, the current plan with the raising of the Loop Road and the using of the balance of that fill material in a berm that is not quite as retentive of the existing trees as this plan is, but is perhaps a little bit more naturalistic at the end of the day, and can still provide for habitat benefits, is a balancing of those earthwork issues.
Do we have a precise measurement of what these 20 trees are?
Yes, they're in the document.
Okay, and it will show what condition they are, what species they are, et cetera? So we have that?
Yes.
I need a little clarification.
Yes.
When I look at, I guess it's figure 4, which is what's right there, I think.
Figure 4 from the recent submission?
Yeah.
Yeah, no, this is from, this is figure 4, we have to go back to the top.
This is the earlier one, right. But right here, this looks like, if we have this road right here going along here, then there is a turnoff into here, and then it comes around like that, I believe, right now, and is it...
Yes, we'll get back to the auditorium in a moment, because this is an old drawing, this is an old drawing that doesn't show the current auditorium layout.
These sections are through over here.
I know, but I'm back on this because I think it really helps solve the problem of the parking, because you come in here, this space over here is not going to be handicapped, but you could, you could park, disembark from the car, and go down this, and then come back up.
Yeah, let's go to that for a moment.
That wouldn't require much, if any, cut and fill.
So in, oops, we had previously shown an access to loading and accessible parking on the north side of the auditorium with the assistance of town staff and unnamed other contributors.
So conspirators.
We've been looking at an access on the south side, which does a number of things. One, it provides more room for accessible parking. We show eight spaces here where you can pull in, park, and then walk directly to the front of the auditorium. It would also allow for additional four spaces here because across the street, the walkway and a crosswalk and a walkway up to here is under 5%, so that's an accessible walk. And what I was mentioning before in terms of drop-off, that in lieu of dropping off directly here, you could drop off along this road, in the aisle, along the sidewalk, and also walk up to the front door. So that's a way to have that, perhaps not right there, but just short of that. And that would allow you to turn into the parking and already be there rather than have to go further up and turn down if there were a road access available.
So can I ask you about the number of handicap spaces that there, there are four below here, and how many, 6, 7, 8 of them?
8.
12 total?
Yes.
So is that, is that a code, is that number code required, or is that desired?
I think that exceeds the code requirement, as Bob has calculated.
I actually calculated 7.
7, I think.
So the required number is, or up where the building is?
Yes.
So I thought that, maybe I misunderstood, that you were, were you suggesting that you could actually come up here and drop off and then go back down?
No, I wasn't, just it would be, as Andy just said, you make the turn left, and you drop off, you know, in the aisle to the left, and before you park, you can park, you know, all along the string on the top of the drawing, but the handicap people, you know, can access right from the flat part where the auditorium is, and then also do the 5% walk up, you know, from those four positions down there.
But one of the big advantages of having something down here is you actually use the Loop Road as a Loop Road, because people can come in from the Sawmill, loop around that way, and also at the end of a performance, when we have a lot of traffic leaving, you have people can go out two different ways. Those going back out to the Sawmill can go out through the loop around the other section of the road, others who want to go out to 117 can go this route. So I really think it's, if it can be done, I think it's really desirable to have that second cut into the parking lot.
Well, from this lot, you can still go out at the far north end to the Sawmill, and you can go out this way to the, to 117 if you choose.
Yes, you can. It's a circuitous route to go all the way down, find your way all the way down to get, then I think, my memory serves, down to the front of those buildings, and then that's the way you get out to the north. Now, this is shorter if you left. Well, yeah, but you got to work your way all the way down to, it's different, you're going through a big parking lot to get to the road that's right here anyway, to get, to go out. I mean, I understand what your, what this other idea, Dick, that you have, that you can drop off close to the, where the building abuts the road, the parking lot, but I don't want to discount the notion that it's just from general circulation, it's better to get a link here, so I think it should still be looked at.
I wouldn't argue that. Circulation is...
Then we can look at the two and decide with you. Then we can look at the two and decide with you.
So, if we go back to the auditorium, just guess for a moment. So, the, the reorientation of the walkways kind of on a diagonal in, along the same axis of the auditorium requires the reconstruction of the stairs and the little entry plaza here, and it's my understanding that the applicant, Mr. Charney, has agreed to fund the construction of many of these improvements shown on this plan. So, while we're here, anything else about the auditorium, so the, accessible parking is here, loading is at the rear, these doors are basically parallel on either side, so you can back into that space with a three-point turn. There is a gate here, there's a fence along the south side of, or the east side of the auditorium boundary, there'd be a gate here for emergency access onto the.
So, a breakaway type of gate, huh?
Yes.
There's a fence?
Yes.
What kind of a fence? Has that been determined?
Privacy fence.
What does that mean?
And so, you can't see through it? That was, it hasn't been detailed yet. The idea is that the, the auditorium doesn't see out to the East Village and vice versa.
Oh, really?
Yeah, from the, from about here.
What is so exclusive about the people living in this place, that they have to be shielded from public view?
It's a request of the town.
It's a request of the town?
Yes.
That they, really?
Well, over here, you'd want to protect the town from the headlight glare if the cars pulling in.
Yes.
I, I don't know that, it hasn't been decided yet. Like, we haven't discussed the details of it.
Andy's correct, hasn't been detailed out yet.
Yeah. So, he's saying a privacy fence.
Well, there is a fence to delineate the property boundary.
Yes.
That's all we determined.
And also. Sheila said that, you know, where the handicap cars are parking, they're going to have headlights for the night show.
Yeah, but there's, yes, I agree, and I think there's screening here to take care of that, and maybe there needs to be a solid fence there as well.
Right. Now, have, have we changed these around, all the drainage areas, areas, is that still working?
The drainage area is still.
The layout that Andy's showing is still under review by the town board.
By the committee?
Yeah, there were two alternatives that were submitted, this is one of the two alternatives, and the town board members who were involved in this have yet to finalize their last set of comments, we are expecting them Monday.
So, we have, there are two alternatives that are being thought about at this point, so.
The two alternatives basically are to flip the parking spaces to the north side of this aisle. It's still on the south side, it's just the parking spaces are on the other side.
But would the lines that are proposed for the subdivision, basically the same in either, either rendering?
This line would have to change.
For the most part.
Yes, this, this line changes and the back line changes.
The driveway would have to shift over.
Yes.
So, we need some direction from the applicant, don't we?
The south line and the north line shift a little bit.
Well, what's the other version then? So, I mean, we're being told that the property lines are different with the other version.
So, you can see one of the, one of the attributes of this south property line is it notches.
Right.
It notches out to accept the parking spaces, and it provides room on the toll side, on the East Village side, for some screening.
Right.
For the residents.
I like it.
Haven't seen the other one yet. Is this your preferred one, Andy?
It is our preferred one, because, much because of that screening ability.
Oh, okay.
So, here's the parking spaces on the north side of that aisle.
So, what are the merits of this one?
Sorry?
What are represented as being the merits of this one, and why is it on the, under consideration as opposed to the other one?
It was requested that we look at it by the town, town staff.
But did they tell you why?
Town board.
Town board.
Town board, please.
Why did they like this one? Why did they want you to look at this? Why did they see the merits of it?
Well, I, I will tell you what I believe the merits are.
Okay.
These spaces are a little bit closer to the front door, you don't have to cross the aisle, but there's not a lot of traffic. The, the, I think less, the non-benefits, if you will, is that here, at this corner, because the road has to hug this side to get turning space for the loading area, there's no room to put some evergreen planting at this corner. That corner is fairly visible as you go up and down the Route A in the East Village, so that, that being able to plant at that corner softens that a bit. The maneuvering is a little tougher for the loading truck coming in here, you would need probably a five-point turn, depending on the size of your car, to be able to back into that, the size of your truck. So, those are the primary, otherwise, it's, it's similar.
So, it's the proximity of the spaces to the sidewalk and to the front entrance, maybe five feet free spot.
It's the other side of the aisle.
Right, okay.
Yeah, but for handicap people, that.
It can make a difference.
It could, yeah, sure.
So, so, just for the planning board's information, these two alternatives are currently being discussed by the town board, and we're not sure where they stand at the moment.
And they haven't asked for our opinion?
Well, we could get it anyway. I think we should, frankly. I mean, I, I'm not really joking, I think it would help the applicant, I mean, this has been lingering out here for months, this line, so if we're down to two, you know, as Andy has articulated, there are merits to one versus another, we can spell those out and make a recommendation if we are so disposed.
Okay.
If we're not, that's fine too.
What is the size truck? That's the model for the turning?
I think it's an SU-30.
How large is that?
It's not a tractor-trailer truck.
It's like a delivery truck.
So, is that typical of what a performance?
It's bigger than a van. It's box truck.
Yes, I agree, that's, that's, I thought it was an SU-40, I'm sure it was an SU-40.
Andy, could you flip back when, flip back to the other one? How does, how does the other one work for turns?
SU-40s might be more realistic for loading gear. You may be right, I don't have to go back and check. Oh, what does it say? I'm sorry.
It says SU-30.
And on the occasions that you do get a tractor-trailer, you can open the gate, or go through the gate, and they'll be able to turn.
Wonderful. Now, what kind of turn, this, this is a.
This is a three-point turn, this is an easier turn, because you're turning from the left side and backing in, as opposed to try to turn from the right side and back in.
Yep. So, you have better, on one, you have better truck movement, and on the other one, you have the parking closer to the front door.
And better screening.
So.
Better screening on this one, better opportunity to screen.
For the kinds of performances that they have here, I don't know how many times, for the kinds of acts they have, it actually requires a truck to come in and to download equipment, so on and so forth, I don't know what the frequency of that move is, tough to project, they, they know better than, than I do certainly about that, but, but I don't think it's sort of a daily movement, and I'm not sure.
They can always back in from the streets, from the loop.
Well, that's, is that really a realistic option? Is that something that we have to write into the plan, to say that it would be available for deliveries? You know, the gate would be open just for those kinds of situations?
This gate here?
Yeah.
I, I think that if it's an occasional thing, I don't, I don't think it's, the intent is to leave the gate open all the time.
Oh, no, we understand that, it's a breakaway gate, but I mean, if they have to come once a week for, at most, I guess, a different performance at the back of truck, and would that be something that would, would work?
I guess it depends who owns the gate.
Who owns the gate?
The gate's on the town side.
Oh, of course.
You're asking questions I cannot answer.
Because we don't know where the line is, okay.
Across the line, is there, would there necessarily?
Who has the key?
Both sides would probably have the key, I think, because it's not allowed to use. We're being neighborly here.
The question is, is not necessarily the gate, the gate's a device to, to exercise an easement.
Right.
So, is, it's really, is there, would there be an easement that would be necess, written that would be necessary to access through a little cut here to get to this, a piece of property?
I think it was an envision that there'd be an access easement.
Right. It could be the conditions of that easement that would say how many times or how often in operation of the gate and all that, right.
We definitely want the gate closed most of the time, because otherwise it becomes a shortcut.
Right.
I guess.
Somebody will figure it out. If not, they'll ride motorcycles through, it'd be something.
But I think it's.
I don't know who it's a shortcut for, though.
Yes.
But anyway.
Yeah.
My, my opinion about this is that it just seems to me that the town board is, they've been looking at this, and for me, it's six of one, half a dozen of the other, actually. I mean, if you, if you really look at it very closely, you could say, well, I like this better, but it seems to me that it's really not dispositive with respect to, it's so much different that the planning board really ought to exercise some opinion about this. I don't really see the, the, the operation of the consequences to the property, the operation of the facility, to the extent the planning board should care about that, would really normally be in our prerogative, or really should be in this particular case. I know that we get involved in, in these things on regular applications, and I'm not suggesting that this is anything other than a regular application for us, but in this particular case, whether the parking spaces are on one side of the, of the driver or the other, I would let it, to me, I would let the, the people who are going to operate the auditorium make that decision.
Yeah, that would be good to get that input, actually.
No, and in the interest of trying to settle on the master subdivision line, we would appreciate if that's how the board felt, this consensus saying that you would be fine with either one, as opposed to saying that you have no opinion, because then they can go back to the town board and they'd say, okay, we don't have to come back for another.
Yeah, yeah.
The board, we'll, we'll get to selecting those.
And again, perhaps if, if everyone agrees, letting it to the people who have to actually operate it, they have, have their input.
I think that's important.
I do too.
Because the size of the truck may anticipate that there'll be future modifications to the auditorium to allow bigger vans that need more change area and everything else within the building come in that way. So, that's, and a five-point turn is, you know, it's 10 seconds or 20 seconds of more annoyance. Hey, I think it's six and a half of one and six of another, but.
Well, I, I don't know how large an SU-30 is, and I don't know if, if in future times, larger trucks would be coming in for performances at the auditorium, but if a, if an SU-30 needs a five-point turn, if we have to anticipate larger trucks, is there the room for that in the second plan? I, I do also like the screening aspects of this plan. I think it's, it's more gracious to be able to screen it like that, and, but there's, there's really not that much difference, but the turning, the turning radiuses could, could become more of an issue than they are right now.
I agree with that point, but then another point would be that if it's hard, well, then maybe the trucks will be smaller, but then you won't have the audience, so it's, that's why the chairman is suggesting that we say that they, that they're both okay, and that if they can work it out with the people who are going to use the auditorium, then we would be most interested in, in hearing how that solution worked out. I'm not saying mischaracterize.
I'm sure, I'm sure the committee that's working on this is taking all those factors into consideration.
Yeah, the, the size of the truck is actually related to the size of the stage, right? Which is also drives the kinds of performances and kinds of things that happen there.
Right.
And I don't, I'm, I know, I'm not the first to know whether this truck is big enough for the stage, but I'm guessing that, that it's not going to, we're not going to end up with really big trucks coming here.
No. And I don't think we should allow big trailer trucks to go through these narrow roads. I mean, it should be, for moving in and moving out of the, of the development, it should be the same kind of SU-30 or something smaller, so.
How big is an SU-30?
Well, SU-30 is 30 feet.
That means the truck part, the truck part in the back is 30 feet or the whole thing?
Oh, thank, bumper to bumper.
Bumper to bumper is 30 feet?
Yeah, SU-40 is 40 feet. So, I mean, I agree, I agree with Dick's analysis, I mean, if it has to make more points to turn.
So be it.
So be it. They could probably both fit, it just has to be a little bit more convenient, and convenient on the truck driver to make that turn, but they'll get used to it.
With power steering, okay.
But there is power steering, so to Dick's point, I agree with him 100 percent.
Pretty soon, the truck's going to drive itself, so.
Exactly, we can put a small cell network.
With the driver sleeping in the back, how does this work now?
Well, why don't we send a memo and, and, you know, echo what Andy has said in terms of the merits of each, and then, and then also have the operations folks hopefully give some sort of dispositive solution based on the framework that we, we lay out here.
I like it.
So, we're not giving an opinion, we're just stating the pros and cons of.
Well, we're stating what the merits of each, unless you want to state an opinion.
I think the board's saying from a site planning perspective, there are benefits to each of those alternatives, and they are deferring to the committee and the town board to incorporate the operational considerations in making the final decision.
Right.
And to your first sentence, because there are pluses and minuses, that is, that cohabitates the thinking along with that we think that either one will work.
So, as a result of shifting the driveway and the parking to the south side, the units that were formerly four units in this, in this block got, would no longer fit. So, the next diagram shows how the layout plan has adjusted to relocate three town homes to the north end of Route H, two coming from the south side of the auditorium, and one coming from this block here, where it was previously, actually, this roadway had to shift over as well, so the, the auditorium site plan has, has encouraged the East Village to shift in both directions away from the auditorium building. And in doing so, we had two here and three here, these three were a little bit tight in terms of proximity, and so since we needed to move two, we've, we've shown three moving, so that this is now symmetrical, two and two at the ends of, of this open space, and three get added to the end of Route H. And that's the result of plan change, primarily related to the auditorium site plan.
Yeah, personally, I don't have a problem with that, I mean, I have more of a problem with the basements and the dirt.
Does this have any impact on your stormwater, or is it, you guys have worked it all out with what?
No, we've been tracking the stormwater, Maria Alfaro from our office has been tracking the stormwater religiously, because she's the one that has to satisfy both DEP and Moscioli, and so we've been working on both sides.
I've been meeting with her a few times, and most of the stormwater, big items are under control, just so you know. I'm, I'm going to do a little more research on it, but I have, it has been pointed out by my client who was here originally, as you know I was not, that I think the appropriate thing is that the basement, it was silent as the basements in the original approval, it did not say anything about slab, it was silent. So, the point is, it's not necessarily a change, it's a proposal, and I think that is something that's important as we go through, that this isn't something that has been changed or was looked at in something in a different fashion. So, I'll go back and make sure of that, because I don't know that, standing here this evening, but that is what I am being informed by my client who's here at that time.
That would be, that would be great, because my recollection is, we were always talking about slam on graces.
I asked the question, so I will try and look into that and get back to you.
Yeah, obviously, because the basements were a big surprise.
Okay. As I said, it was not proposed, it was silent, which I think is, it's a difference, so we will take a look.
Yeah, and again, you know, going back to one of the first statements you made this, this evening, we're now looking at this obviously in much more detail, so again, in spirit, it's basically the same sort of thing, except that these are some nuances and changes, and there's some consequences to the details. I'm not, it's, it's not even fair to, to characterize it as a change necessarily, but now that we look at this, there are impacts from what we see.
We get that, and that is, I think, the point, that if it is not a change, then it's a question of impact, and we would also ask that, when you do what you do, which is a balancing of all of the interests that are involved, you can see that we are being as flexible as possible on the things that the town has requested, the auditorium parcel, the access points, all the things that you're requesting, but we're also here to urge you to consider that our experts who are going to be buying this and marketing it and selling it to the public are telling us that there are certain things that they need to be able to achieve their goal to make this work for them, and one of those things are basements, so those are important to us, and we hope that that takes, that you consider that, I mean, and give us a recommendation.
Is there information in, in the documents we have now, maybe we already have it, forgive me if I, if I missed it, but in the gross building area for the townhomes, it was 91 units at a certain gross building area, and then the basements came in. Do we have the differential on the gross building area for those two? Do we have the differential on the gross building area for those two?
Well, you know, there was never a building area limit on the townhomes.
I didn't say there was, I was just wondering.
There was average sizes that were provided in the initial PDCP compared to the average sizes of this.
So how many of the 91 are going to have basements?
All of them would have basements.
So are there two-story buildings, now there are three-story buildings?
Two-story buildings with a basement.
So now there's like a 50% increase in gross building area? And that's not, it seems to me that's pretty significant.
Well, we've looked at all the associated impacts with that. It is more building space. As discussed with the board, we would put both a deed restriction and an HOA, a regulation restriction against converting it to bedrooms. They can be used for storage, they can be used for dens without windows or playrooms, things that people do in basements. It's not intended to, that they would sleep more people than would otherwise sleep in the units on a regular basis. Certainly, if somebody's grandkids came for a visit, they could sleep in the basement, I suppose.
Would the cars be parked in some of these basements? Would that be one of the uses, as opposed to taking up space on the ground-level floor?
No, as you recall, there's a drop slab between the garage and the first floor that varies between two feet to five feet. The basement is 10 feet below the main level, so it's not at the same level as the garage.
So everybody would have to have like a Maserati or something like that that has, it's only five feet tall or three feet tall?
No, the car can be of normal height, because the second floor starts 10 feet above the.
Put it into basement area.
Actually, the second floor starts 12 to 15 feet above the garage level.
So on the orientation, could you go to the new plan, the proposed plan, with the revised site boundary for the auditorium?
Go back one, please.
Yeah, this one. I'd like to talk about the orientation of these units. Is there, this is now a.
Rain garden.
Rain garden. And the original plan was over here?
Yes. Which is to the north of the two units that are no longer there, to the west.
So the way this is set up is this, that's a front door, right?
Yes.
And this one is a front door that comes in from the side? It's just the design of the unit?
Yes.
I think we saw that in the architecture. I was just wondering why this orientation with this unit actually looking at something that maybe they don't want to be looking at. Is there a reason why these weren't just both, like rotated 90 degrees and have their front doors on the road, the way these over here are? You can't see them in the plan, the way these are for a kid.
I think it was to give them a garage presence along Road C, and also, yes, and also to orient the other ones that are similar. There's another bank to the left of these. And also because the depth, if you turn these, the depth gets greater, because then you have to have another driveway and a garage apron to the west of that.
So it chooses a way here?
Yeah.
Okay, thanks.
So those are the two changes, if you will, that have occurred, the raised loop road and the moving of three townhomes to the north that have occurred since the December meeting that we had with you. Subject to your concurrence, we would like to incorporate those into the plan and have included those in the full set that you have to review before you. So that shows up there, and it shows up in the environmental analysis as well. Now, we can move on to looking at grading for the whole thing? Or you can take a bathroom break, or you can stretch, and then we can do a little yoga?
Nope.
We're on to the next section.
Well, one of the issues, are you planning to talk to us about parking and guest parking?
Yes, yes, that was my second grouping after grading. Actually, we talked a lot about grading already, so that won't be very long.
Right, okay.
Okay, so site grading. A lot of the issues that we've talked about over the past sessions have been about site grading. One of them has been the relationship of units to the roadway, particularly the perimeter roadway, because that's what everyone else outside of the East Village sees. And as you may recall, we spent early on some time lowering these units, the fronts of these units to be closer to the east entry drive, so that sidewalk could be proximate to the drive. In the PDCP, it was actually raised at the corner, was raised about four or five feet above the drive, which created a separation between the units and the east drive, which was, upon further examination, found not to be desirable. Today, we've talked about lowering the effective height of this wall by, not this time dropping the units, but by raising the road. So we've gotten to do both. And in doing so, we've tried to balance between the walls, the grading, and the getting an optimum relationship between, especially on the outside, between the units and the loop road and the entry drive. This is, you can see the contours showing the grading surrounding the East Village units to get down to grade in the meadow. This reflects the reformatted berm, which saves a number of the meadow trees here and plants additional native vegetation on that fill slope. Within all of this, we have been tracking the stormwater management measures. Some of those are rain gardens, smaller pockets in between units. Some of them are subsurface galleys here and here and here. And to locate those, we've done a series of extensive soil testing to provide, to be able to show to DEP and to the town that they have an adequate perk rate for those underground basins. We also have a more traditional surface basin here. And of course, the bulk of the, in terms of detention, the bulk of the drainage from the western part of the East Village is piped to the stormwater basin that takes the place of the 700 building at the north end of the office complex. So we believe that the stormwater will integrate into the greater Chaparral Crossing Stormwater Management Plan and also be similar in treatment to the retail component that was approved by the town and by DEP. That's kind of in a nutshell our grading and levels discussion. Have any questions that we can speak to on those issues?
You've heard us, I guess, talk about the change in the road grade? Is that now the preferred plan? I mean, we talked about raising, I think, the water main, are we past that issue, Bob?
I believe you agreed to raise the.
Yes, we understand.
DEPW had concerns about that?
It's more shell's concern, and we would agree to raise the water line to a standard depth below the new profile of the loop road.
I think there was some issue as to the quality or the type of fill that you would need, and be some sort of road quality, but then I think there was some discussion that that was not going to be necessary in this case?
I think the amount of fill they have on site, they can use that as long as it's compacted properly to maintain stability for the roadway, obviously. You have a 10-foot fill section. So I'm sure you'll have the proper compaction measurements from your engineers to certify that as well.
It's still have to be inspected and properly placed.
Yeah. Any questions on grading?
Yeah, I have one, an observation. This part right here, it really does look like a berm. It looks like an engineered slope. I mean, it's, and I just wonder if there's a quality to this kind of, I think, earth form that is clearly man-made. And, I'm sorry, Andy, can I just finish?
Yeah.
Which to me is clearly man-made. And it looks like it's almost a matter of intention that this neighborhood is lifted up away from its neighbors by just the appearance of that. Secondly, it exists in what is a pretty nice natural landscape as it is now. I don't disagree with the desire to keep the fill on-site. I think that's a responsible thing to do, instead of trucking it off. And I think that, from my way of thinking, raising the loop road is, number one, the best way to use it. And secondly, I think putting it over here to, in this landscape area, in this landscape area, is another way to do it. But I think that the end result of the specific design is not going to look natural at all. And I think that there's enough land here, unless I'm mistaken, tell me if I'm wrong, there's enough land here in order to give, to move some of this dirt a little bit farther down slope and to sculpt it in a way where it actually looks like nature made that, rather than D-40 came in and just spilled it over the side.
Well, within the parameters of the wetland buffer and wetlands, I guess, right?
Yeah, but we have discretionary authority on that.
Yeah, but Tom's got a good point. I mean, here's, isn't this the buffer line, Steve?
Yes.
So this area here is available, one could argue.
And that's the area that the first of the alternates that I showed at the end of the slide deck, the three-to-one to five-to-one slope extended down in here. And I enlarge this just to show that it's a little bit deceiving at a distance, because you see the black contour lines and you don't see the lighter existing contour lines. So there is a meadow, a sloping meadow, that varies in slope today. You know, it's flatter in some areas and steeper in some areas. The first, that first three-to-one varied to five-to-one was actually worked out by our landscape architects in conjunction with Steve as a way of shaping that fill as naturalistically as they collectively could. So I don't disagree with you. I think that that could be, this is a more level area. If that fill was extended a little bit further out, that would smooth it out. It would take out a couple of trees, but the trees are of marginal value, I would say.
Exactly, if we can get that kind of assessment on those trees, that would help us, too, in that area. Because again, if they're marginal, then we're not really giving up much, and we're going to replant them with, you know, new species, and maybe a greater variety of species might be an advantage.
Let's go back to that.
By the way, the trees on the commercial site look rather poorly right now. All the stuff you put in. I don't think they're there, Steve, I mean, it really needs a lot of work.
Well, they are under warranty, so they will be replaced if.
All right, so there's the three-to-one to five-to-one. And it's smoothed out more so than the one that we just saw. So we're certainly not averse to doing that. And we can sit again with Steve and look at each individual tree and balance how that could be smoothed out.
I think that's better. Thank you.
I know he is. You've got two weeks to do this. But you know, we heard you, is that a consensus of others as well? I'm just trying to understand what people are thinking.
Thoughts? Fair enough.
Good luck.
Well, we have to, we don't know at this point, frankly.
Yeah, I'm with Sheil on that. You know, I think it's the trees, I saw the photo that was offered, that they weren't that attractive, but that doesn't mean there aren't some others that are better. And, you know, it's spreading it out to a certain extent, it sounds good. I don't know if the flat part up there, if there is a flat part, certainly if you have the peak that goes and it goes down, that area becomes a playground. You know, the kids would tend to stay there, they don't want to chase the balls all the way down to the swamp. So I, it's sort of like the.
Well, the trail's down.
And there's pros and cons, and I think it's good to be really neat if everybody takes a look at it, does the balance. I could live with either one. And, you know, I've done more dirt in my career than Tom probably has. He puts everything above all the dirt.
Could we take from this that you would allow us to work with Steve to come to a plan similar to this that looks at those trees that are in play between the two plans?
Yeah, if we get it extended out, that's fine. I mean.
And just, again, you're going to get another opinion here. I wouldn't sacrifice a, because the amount of land we're talking about here and the impact on the overall landscape is, to me, is really a lot more important than saving a couple of trees. I mean, we lose trees all the time, and they, you know, in 10 years, they'll be back. That's my opinion on that. But that's not to say you shouldn't look at it.
Well, it's important, though, that we've heard an awful lot on this application from the neighbors in Cowen and making sure that they're satisfied in terms of trees and whatever clearing.
Even though they can't see anything, you know, when it's leaf soft time type of thing. But it might cut down noise, if it's done right. You know, that's where the little berm, you know, little hiccup on it might cut down some noise. So the noise is an issue, trees are an issue.
Yeah, but I think if we look at it and get the assessment with Steve in terms of. Shortly with Steve, and then get that done.
How much time you have?
Two weeks. Six days? Six days?
Something like that.
That's six days, yes.
Yep, next Friday.
But he's taking all that, this is like saved up vacation time.
Has it been anything in terms of, I guess I'm not going to. I guess that falls into a different category.
I'm sorry, that's not on my agenda.
Withdraw that from my agenda, too. I could really get in trouble.
I just have one comment on the slope. Is, I think, to be more creative, you know, I think we should allow encroachment where it makes sense within the 100-foot buffer. Yeah, because I think you could create better, you know, flowing slopes than what is shown here.
Yep, okay. And that would be part of the mitigation, that would be the mitigation of the buffer.
As well.
Okay. So I guess the thought is, the consensus is, that it can be done creatively so long as the assessment of the trees is not overly Bergensen. Fair, is that fair?
Well, we'll just, you need to see what it is, right?
You'll see the results, but this is the direction it will go.
Yep.
Okay. Back to the grading plan, please. So the second broad category that we looked at in different ways is circulation and parking. First, general circulation. These are, of course, all private roads within the East Village and Chaparral Crossing, are connecting points to the east entry drive are here, and the loop road are here. That has not changed. That has been labeled Road A. All the other drives within the East Village, so along Road A, and the plan from the very beginning was laid out such that townhome front doors either faced along Road A, along common open spaces, or along pedestrian drives. There were no front doors that occurred in conjunction with garages. Garages were all to the rear. And so the other drives within the East Village are all now called common service drives, which provide access to the garages. So that configuration basically has not changed since the MFPD. All of these roads will be private and the, regulated by both the East Village homeowners association as well as the overall Chaparral Crossing homeowners association. association as well as the overall Chapakua Crossing homeowners association. And the applicant is willing and ready to set a 15 mile per hour limit within the East Village to keep traffic slow as it should be within confines of a layout like this.
I like that.
Are we anticipating stipulations in our approval that say that this will not be a gated road?
That's been from the beginning as well. It's not going to be gated.
Do you have a turnaround up here?
We do. It's a hammerhead as approved by the fire department.
All right, now I see.
So we spent a fair amount of time with the building department and the fire chief. And in doing so, agreed upon that all roads will have effective 24-foot width for maneuvering and staging of fire fighting equipment. Road A has a 24-foot pavement width along with parking on either side, parallel parking on either side. All the common service drives have a 20-foot wide pavement, but then two feet on either side that's either connecting road, driveway, or otherwise stabilized to serve, to support the outriggers of the ladder truck, the tower truck, as reviewed by the chief. And we located within the plan spots to serve every townhome group for the fire truck to sit. So that was, we went over it in a number of work sessions to make sure that was workable. We also increased the number of hydrants. You don't see them on this plan. There are now 15 hydrants within the East Village such that there's a minimum radius or maximum radius, service radius for each hydrant to around the perimeter of each building block. And the 15 are located such that each building block is, each townhome block is covered by at least two hydrants. So there's double coverage at least for every townhome block. We also increased on these two particular, the sets of blocks, the difference, the distance between the facing units, again, to give them a little bit more swing space for the potential use of a tower ladder truck. So those units were pushed out from one another. In terms of parking and driveways, we have proposed in this plan, different from the PDCP, that our driveways would not be for parking but for, basically for pulling into the garages. So they are eight to 13 feet in depth, depending on how the units sent back from the road to give a little bit of stagger. And they are, people will be precluded, again, in the HOA from parking in the driveway. And for most vehicles, it's, you can't fit within an eight-foot to 13-foot driveway. This, we believe, will provide for better sight distance for someone backing out of the driveway because there will be no cars sitting in your driveway or an adjacent driveway that would otherwise block your sight distance as you backed in and out. As you look down the common service drives, we believe it will also reduce the visual clutter of seeing a row of cars sitting in front of the townhome garages, which on the closer spaced townhome complexes, you do often see people sitting outside.
Where would those cars go?
Well, the, per the town code, you're only allowed to count one space in a garage for your required parking. Between the one space per garage and the engraed spaces that are either in little groups spaced around the townhomes or along the main drive, Road A, parallel spaces, we satisfy the town code for parking. In addition, we have the second garage space. There are 91 additional spaces above and beyond the code requirement.
Well, that's fine, but we have, and I think it's quite clear, that you have satisfied the minimum code requirements, and I'll emphasize the word minimum. But how realistic is it that we can expect that in these two and three-bedroom condos, townhouses, excuse me, that we're only going to see two cars? My understanding is that every single one of them has a two-car garage. Is that correct? So, but how realistic is it in this town that we're going to see that there are only going to be two cars to a household? And more importantly, we've talked about this before, where are the visitors going to park? I don't see it. And this issue of these aprons being reduced to eight feet and 13 feet between that, to me, is really a big, big problem. And I think it's unrealistic. You can have all the regulations you want and HOAs and everything else. I think it's unenforceable if we're going to see more than two cars owned by some of the households, at least some, if not many. Where are the cars going to go? And that goes then to the width of the roadways and the service roadways in terms of parking parallel on these roads and then reducing the usable size of these roadways and also just having clutter out in, on the side of these streets. So we've talked about this before. I know that, I think the town engineer has indicated that in terms of minimum code requirements, the aprons could exist, the turning radius and sightlines could work. But I think we're charged with the question, is that good planning? Is that what we want to see for the community? And I have real grave reservations over these substantially truncated aprons.
Well, maybe, James, can you speak to a number of cars in your residence?
James, it's Patrick, Toll Brothers. So these shorter aprons are fairly regular...
I'm sorry, forgive me for interrupting, but it might help the discussion. Is there a blow up of one of these driveways that shows the aprons themselves relative to the units? There you go. I think that's the graphics.
It was.
And can you blow that up a little bit so we... Little more. One more. One more. There.
So the short, the idea of a shorter apron on a traditionally designed neighborhood is a pretty common design element. We've incorporated it into a number of our communities.
When you say shortened, this short, I mean, for example...
Sure, shorter than this. I mean, we'll have, we have communities where we have a four-foot, five-foot, you know, apron behind all homes. We also, we'll sell a lot of townhomes that are one-car garage, single driveway townhomes. And my parents live in one, and Toll Brothers one. And, you know, they have two cars and they park one in the garage. And ironically, they park the other one in the visitor, visitor space that's a little ways down the street in a visitor lot. So we don't foresee this being an issue whatsoever. We actually had some concerns about the original plan and the length of those driveways because they were, they were like right at, Andy, you may be able to tell me what the original lengths were. They were 16 to 18 feet where you have, now you have, you know, excuse my French, but the ass end of a car hanging out into already a very narrow driveway lane. And what we struggle with on our townhome communities is keeping, you know, what we like to consider a really neat streetscape where you don't want to see, you know, there's a higher density neighborhood and you want the homes to have whatever space they can have. And you don't want to have these, you know, vehicles or in some cases, it's garbage pails and then those sorts of things really starting to clutter the streetscape or in this case, the, you know, the service roadways.
Well, again, I go back to the other, my first question, where are the cars going? Where is that visitor parking? What's the capacity of that visitor parking? How far is it from these spots? Thanksgiving comes, people come to visit homes and be there. Where are these cars going to go?
Well, I mean, our spine road is serviced by how many parallel spots, Andy?
I don't know the exact number, probably 20 to 25. There are 110 visitor spaces.
Where are they designated?
106.
Are those on the other side of the wall, on the other side of the...
They're all along the, they're within, they're in various places within the...
Again, I understand what the code says and I understand that we're hearing that it meets minimum standards, but we, I think we have to recognize what happens in reality. So what happens in bad weather and snow and ice, where are people going to park? They're not going to park way away and then walk 100 yards, 50 yards, so whatever it might be.
Would help me to go over the numbers real quick again. The code says that you, the code says that you can only count one garage space against your minimum.
Right.
Right? And for these units, what is the code minimum?
Minimum is 197 spaces.
Nope. For each unit, it's...
Two.
Two?
One per dwelling unit plus half space per bedroom.
One and a half, plus half space per bedroom?
Yes.
So we're talking about two.
Two or more.
Two or more.
It's more than two.
So it's two and a half.
Three bedroom is three.
More than double the number.
It's two and a half. So I understand what the code says, but for each unit, you already accounted for two of those two and a half cars. So then you have a half a car for each unit. That's 45 spaces you need to find for the code on site, right? And then in addition to that, you have the visitor parking.
Correct. You're right.
I don't recall, where is the visitor parking? Is it, are you using a lot that really is over on the commercial?
No.
No, no, that's all plucking.
It's along the road.
It's along the road.
There's parallel parking along the spine road, there's parallel parking. I think, it brings me back to when I first got married, I lived here in Chapakua in the townhome community. There were two of us. We had, as James was talking about, we had a one-car garage. We had two cars, one parked in the driveway. Here, you're going to have two cars. And I'll also say to you, one of the other aspects of why we didn't care about it compared to some of our friends, and there's a couple of things that's here, and I'll apologize for it if you've heard it before because we're doing this all over the community. Who are you expecting to bring into this? You're expecting an awful lot of the empty nest to, because these are very high-end townhomes. Somebody with family with this kind of price that we're talking about charging is going to buy a single-family home for the most part. So who are we looking to attract? So the idea of having a couple with two cars, and yes, talking about visitor and the visitor spaces, that will work. The only issue with using the both of the garages, and again, which keys into the point we were making earlier, is you need storage space. So then the idea of having the unfinished basement, which we've had in many of the townhomes, is where you then, not using the garage for where you put the tools and not using the garage where you put the extra tires and all the rest of it, it goes into the basement. And that is part of the issue, you know, in designing these things, where you're trying to bring people who've been living in much larger spaces, who want to stay in their community into the smaller spaces and bringing it in. To your point, on a personal level, I don't think you're going to have many of these units that are going to have more than two cars per unit. So with that, we now have the visitor parking that's also built in. And frankly, if you're talking Thanksgiving or Christmas, you know, where you have that, we also have a, I mean, when we lived in our townhome, we had Old Farm Lake, we had, there were visitor spaces throughout. You had a park far away down by the clubhouse on the occasion of the holiday where people would have to, you know, they would drop somebody off and go do that. And here, you're going to have hundreds and hundreds of spaces that are going to be empty in walking distance from these people's homes that are over in the unused shopping center during these, during these, when they're closed during the holidays. So on that level, I don't, I think you have some site planning issues, but I think, speaking for James, they're very satisfied that the number of spaces here is sufficient to, you know, not just for code purposes, but for planning purposes and for what they need to sell to the people who are going to come in to buy.
Unfortunately, it's not coming up on the screen, but Matt has it.
It's in tab eight.
Okay, so all the engraed parking.
The orange are all the street spaces.
If you recall, we were in meetings where we were very, very careful when we were redesigning for the fire access to not lose the parallel because we wanted, we needed to keep all of those spaces for the visitor parking. But if they're used for parallel parking, we can't use them for emergency access, can't get the outriggers out. No, we have the room.
24 feet besides the parallel.
Correct. And how about the other passageway roads, the 20 footers?
They don't have parking along. They have perpendicular parking.
All of this was cleared, but again, on the spine road where we have all of that parking, we were very careful to make sure that we had both the fire access and the parking.
I have some additional, I mean, I echo Bob's concerns that she's expressed about the adequacy of the parking and the need for the driveway. When I have people who come to my home who have, they're not necessarily handicapped, but people have mobility issues, you want them to park in your driveway so that they can get to your home easily. I, I'm looking at where the visitor parking is and I'm wondering how if I were in this development, where my guests who have mobility issues, how they would get to my house.
My answer would be in my home because we've had that, because we have family members with mobility issue. You would take your car, you would put it out in the street, and your friend or your visitor would park in your, would park in your garage.
But it's also, you got to keep in mind that the driveway side of the home is the back of the home. It's not somebody's front door. So the visitor spots that are along these roadways are actually the front of somebody's home. The parallel spots that are located in front of these homes are at their front door.
But there's no guarantee that the spot in front of my home will be available when my guest comes to visit. The spot that might be available could be quite far away from my home.
Well, I would suggest to you that virtually every townhouse community, apart from this with the road issues or anything else, have these issues, every one of them. Because you have a code requirement, there's a limited number of visitor requirement. As I said, I've lived in them and we've designed many of them. And frankly, because of your code and the way it works and the fact that we have 91 extra spaces in addition to your code requirement because of the second, because that's not the way it works on a lot of other codes, that we have two spaces inside a garage and are only allowed to count one, and that is not a typical way of doing it, we have, in my opinion, much more parking than is in a typical townhome community. And I think if you'd find that in, you know, other communities here in Chapakua that have been approved previously.
Well, can you provide some examples of that?
I'm just, off the top of my head, I'm thinking Old Farm Lake and how it was approved years and years ago, and I lived there years and years ago, but I know the issues of what was over there.
I just, sorry, go ahead.
I'm just wondering if that is, you know, it was approved years and years ago, have we learned something in the ensuing years that there might be a better way to plan it?
I lived there, it was never an issue.
Well, that's, no offense, but we'd like something more up to date.
Well, I'd like to suggest that there are cities and communities all over this country that don't have parking for, in front of every unit for a family member who has challenges, physical challenges. I mean, that there are great neighborhoods that don't have that kind of parking. And one of the reasons they are great neighborhoods is because they have the kind of character of streets and sidewalks and homes and relationships to each other that prohibit that. But the chief quality of the neighborhood is the fact that they have that kind of relationship. And they are great neighborhoods and people live in them and they do fine living in them. There are other neighborhoods, like the one I live in and maybe the one most of us live in here, which have ample parking in driveways where you can get five cars in there for Thanksgiving. It's just two different ways of living and they are both legitimate ways of living. And they're two different products and they're both legitimate products. I think that this particular company is putting this product forward as a particular lifestyle, which they have some experience doing, some, a lot of experience doing. And I understand that some people may say, well, I don't want to live that way. But that's not saying that everybody doesn't want to live that way. And so I think that we need to be open to different products in our community and maybe not suggest that every, that every unit in our town have a parking space for, you know, for everybody who comes for Thanksgiving within 30 feet of the home or within 50 feet of the home. People make adjustments based on, you know, where they live and they live there because they see other things that are attributes that they really like of the place. So that's my feeling.
Yeah, I understand, but I think it's fair to observe that what I think is really driving the significantly changed and truncated driveways is the expanded footprints of each of these homes. And that's, on average, they're 200 feet bigger than they were before. And that's really what's driving this. So it could be a product, it could be other considerations, but that is... But that is something that I think we have to measure. My concern is that, notwithstanding the regulations, that you're still going to have people parking in these little drives, these little alcoves, these little, whatever you want to call them, in front of the homes, not the parking spots. Because people do that. And when you do that, and it's only eight feet in your car, then talk about the car protruding into the roadway, now you have a real issue. I think it's noteworthy, I don't know what the garaging situation, but it's noteworthy that in your product just down the road in Pleasantville, your driveways are averaging much larger than these eight to 13-foot ones. And why is that? How's that work? So again, we didn't have this on the first time around. So this is a change. It might very well be that that change really doesn't mean anything, but I'm not convinced of it at this point. And I understand your arguments, and perhaps, I haven't read through the information, so it's unfair perhaps to...
Just to answer your question about the neighborhood down the street, totally different product, right? Those are front door fronts, garage fronts, driveway fronts, and there is a significant lack of street parking there. I mean, the only off-street parking that is really in that community, for all intents and purposes, are the driveways. This is a completely different design, where this is a walkable community with sidewalks, parallel parked streets. I mean, this is a completely different beast. And back to the comment about the footprints being different and being changed, I would make the argument that if a company like ours was involved from the beginning, you would have seen nothing else but this, because we know what sells. We know what works. And those footprints, I don't know the genesis of them. I know that that's not a marketable product, that doesn't accommodate the buyer who's going to be purchasing here. It doesn't accommodate their lifestyle, the space that they need, the location of where the bedrooms need to be. It just, it doesn't work. It may have been, you know, I have no idea the genesis of it. But I could tell you, if we weren't involved from the beginning, you would be looking at footprints that you're looking at today.
That's for the particular demographic that you want to sell to. There is another demographic which would be, I think, perfectly happy with another building type, another floor plan type. It's just the demographic you choose.
Part of that is also by design as well, right? I mean, if you're, again, this goes back to the bedroom restriction. If you're selling two-bedroom for sale townhomes, fee simple townhomes, that is a product that by design is going to attract a certain buyer. And that's a buyer who doesn't need a third bedroom, who doesn't have children. And in order to accommodate that lifestyle and that those agent place concerns and all the things that come with it, you need the space to accommodate the rooms.
But these are not all two-bedroom townhomes?
But they're predominantly. So if you look at the plan, there are varying shapes and sizes. So there are some that are 29 feet wide, and those are bedroom upstairs. There are some that are 30 and 32 feet wide, and those are typically bedroom downstairs.
Getting to the units that were on the previous plan, one of the things I was going to say in the PDCP plan, was bedrooms designed, or units designed in 2014 by a prior architect who did not have a client. So one of the benefits now of coming with Toll is that they have the experience, the added experience, both of their portfolio and of five years hence, and of localized experience to see what is their target market and what types of features and options are they looking to have. So we have now a much better indication. And one of the results is that there is a bigger footprint or a bigger unit. But I don't think that's necessarily the only reason why there is not a driveway in the back, because of just that, those two things that I mentioned before, the visual clutter. Looking up, if you drive up into the enclave, it is vehicular focused. You look up and down the streets and you see cars parking in the garages, parking in the driveways. That was the original plan for the East Village. They were vehicular courts, and they had the traditional guest parking in the middle island. But that's very vehicular focused. And we went in pretty much the opposite direction, going with the TND-type design, where it is more walkable. You're trading off the walkability and seeing the fronts of houses as opposed to having that much convenience and driving right up to your front door.
That was actually done partially at our request.
Yes, yes. With your collaboration and your encouragement. But yes. And I think that, frankly, I think it's a nicer community to, more attractive community to live in, especially since I can not only walk down the street, I can walk to many other things. So the change in the unit designs have resulted from Toll coming with a wealth of experience and a particular market that they're looking to serve and to attract. Some of the units have first-floor masters, which they did not previously have. Some of the units have been, we've made a request for nine additional bedrooms to provide for more flexibility. Right now, the mix per the original PDCP is, of the 91 units, there are 23-bedroom units and 71-two bedrooms. So they're predominantly two bedrooms. The nine additional bedrooms would make for 29-three bedrooms and 62-two bedrooms. Still predominantly two bedrooms. But this allows them more flexibility, especially where we have the drop slabs, which make the units narrower at the base and to provide more pizzazz in those units. There's another bedroom upstairs in several of them.
So I just wanted, you said more flexibility. You said it twice. What does that mean? More flexibility in the?
Flexibility in the market.
Sales package in the market?
Yes, yes. In being able to offer, as James said, not only different unit designs and unit facades, but also floor plans.
So the difference is how many more three bedrooms?
Nine more three bedrooms.
So in this market, in Westchester County, this part of Westchester County, where housing actually, I think, from my perspective, is doing quite well and is going to continue to do quite well. The difference in the success of this project is nine bedrooms?
I'll let James speak there.
It would occur to me that you won't have a problem, that those two bedrooms that aren't three bedrooms, they're not going to go begging in the market, are they?
Yeah, no. So the history of the additional nine bedrooms was, again, to accommodate, there were some grading.
I remember that.
There were some grading issues, right? And in order to help lessen the impacts of reorientating the buildings to be more aligned with what the board's vision was for the community, we had then kind of transition grade in a way that was, forced us to, again, transition it instead of from left to right within a building, where you could very easily kind of accommodate it through front door, front door, front door, front door with a naturally climbing grade. You're kind of locking it in at the back of the building. And now that grade had to transition from the driveway to the front door. So you just took garage slabs and you depressed those garage slabs. And in order to accommodate that garage slab, you're now introducing, in some cases, up to 10 steps from someone's garage to their first floor. And by doing so, someone who's looking, would be looking for, someone who would be willing to live with that in their garage is certainly most likely not the same person who would be looking to live in a two-bedroom home.
Andy, you've been mentioning throughout the evening changes from the approved PDCP.
Yes.
Is there anywhere you've got that list inventoried? I think it'll be critical down the road to have that.
The answer is yes when we have our plan finalized. But yes, we do. We have it with respect to the current plan. We have a draft petition that we put together with what we believe are going to be the changes. But again, it's difficult. We'd share it. But every time, we've talked tonight again about a number of things that would change those requests and change those items. But yes, we will have that. Most of that relief, almost all of that relief, will wind up going before the town board and coming back to you for report recommendation at that point. But the answer is yes. We do have it with respect to the current plan, but it sounds like we're making changes to some extent again this evening.
Well, I don't know if we're making changes, but I think to Les's point, for example, it's important, it seems to me, that we document and say that, for whatever reasons, valid, invalid, whatever, we have larger footprints from the PDCP. So that's got to be documented. We're understanding that it's for marketing reasons. We have basements. We have shorter driveways. All these things have got to be...
Are they called out in that environmental analysis?
Right. I was just going to say, there's two different points. I'm not sure that's what Les was asking, but maybe it was. There are changes from, that I believe Andy has shown, that are from the original plan, the last time we had it, and there were changes that were made. There are changes that are going to require zoning code relief. That's a bit different. There are changes that are going to require changes to the master subdivision. That's another different list. There's changes to the subdivision of all of these units that are going to change. So I'm not even clear which ones you're talking about.
I'm focusing on changes that, from the original PDCP that was approved to what you're proposing now. Because in my view, ultimately, the town board is going to approve a revised PDCP. And that revised PDCP is going to look very similar, almost identical to what the planning board is looking at.
Correct.
And they will have to do the environmental analysis. They are the lead agency. They have done all the other environmental analysis through the scope of this project, and they will have to take that environmental analysis, match it against the changes, and decide whether to grant the approval of the revised PDCP.
If that's what you're asking, yes. We believe that's what's been studied in the environmental assessment that has been supplied to you now. You'll be able to take a look at the environmental analysis that's been updated that compares this plan to the PDCP. But just pointing out, it's a separate inquiry as to what exactly is going to require zoning relief. That's not necessarily the same question.
And so my question, my question in particular to what Les is saying is, in the environmental analysis, did you look at all of the options? Because the planning board hasn't yet made their recommendation. You have a preferred that you would like to see, and how do the other options or alternatives compare?
We've included all the studies that we've made of the various things that we were asked to look at and compare them.
But I'm not sure I understand your answer, Andy. So will there be options that have been studied in this environmental?
So the berms, for instance, the different berms, they're included in there. We have shown, we have...
But not the new one?
Well, possibly a new one.
Not the to-be-done.
Yeah, not the to-be-done.
Not version E.
14.
Is that all it is?
We're up to D.
D, yeah.
Yeah, we're up to D.
But on the other issues, I think, as Dick was perhaps pressing on, is, will we see those kinds of alternatives? You know...
They're not new alternatives. They're the alternatives that we looked at with you over the past year.
Right. But is there something that says, we have looked at and said, you know, we have 91 units here. We really would like 91 basements. However, we've looked at this and we have certain places here where maybe it's a little bit more marginal, whatever. And here we have an alternative with 50 basements and 40 on slab. We have a situation here where we think we have some, because it's a three-bedroom, we have to make sure that we have longer driveways there, because with a three-bedroom, we can anticipate that there might be more than two cars. Something like that. I mean, I think you're hearing some things from us, not really decisions, but to Sabrina's point, alternatives really help us in looking at things and working with you to come up with what we think is the best possible plan. And I'm hearing a lot of, this is the way it's got to be because this is the market, and that's really not our major consideration when we make decisions. It certainly is an important factor. But if you can argue for other reasons why this is just as good or just as bad, if we change it around, it's actually worse, that's perfect. But I think those are the kinds of alternatives that we like to see in the analysis. I'm not, we haven't looked at this. So you may have all done it. I don't know.
So we have not, for instance, looked at a variety of number of basements. The basements, we believe, my recollection is that the original process was silent on basements, one way or the other. The basements, we have not found within the site any areas where it's not possible to build basements. So there is no technical reason why the basement can't be supplied.
But have you at least explained in a narrative why you want them and what the impacts are to the basements and what it would be without basements, even though obviously you want very much that 91 basements?
I don't know if we've quantified the volume of the basements. We can certainly do that and add that to the...
Okay.
Because it's in terms of fill, each basement does generate up an amount of fill. But we believe that it's, you know, for, I was just hearing the other day about a townhome development where people were no longer parking in their garage because they were filling it up with stuff. So that's a market experience reaction to provide someplace for people to put their stuff.
And I think that's important to have as part of the analysis, to make your argument why you need, why it's better to have basements.
I think it's really a two-pronged thing, what you're suggesting, and it's really helping them make the ultimate argument they'll have to make to the town board and this board. On the one hand, there should be an environmental analysis of the effects of having basements versus not having basements. And then on the other hand, a narrative as to the reason why basements, from an operational standpoint, are beneficial. I think there's two aspects of that.
I would say something that expands more than just the marketing or the operational considerations, lifestyle, whatever it might be.
We can explain that.
But you have the function of the plan itself, the function of the plan itself, like traffic and all those other things.
And you have some of it, like you've gone to the fire department and you have a good sense as to how the spine road is a safety plus. And so that's part and parcel, as far as I'm concerned, with environmental aspects, because, hey, we're part of the environment, and if we're safe, that's good.
Okay. I just have a few more things. In terms of architecture, we've looked with you at the variety of architectural treatments, the mix of materials that's available and the designs that are available within the Georgian idiom to allow for people to choose their own finishes and combination of materials within design reason, if I can make up a term, to be overseen by Toll. But the idea is not to make them look all the same and not have them look completely different either. So we have worked that into their plan.
That's good. And because every design should have a logic to it, which is part and parcel of what we've just been discussing for the last 10 minutes. And so that fits in good, because it's open, there's a lot of choice that can be done within certain limits on finishes, fascia, et cetera. That's good.
That leads to the clubhouse. The clubhouse, if you may recall, is in the lower-left corner. That was to be converted from the old Reader's Digest guest house. The structural consultant of Toll looked at that and found that they'd have to replace the interior and the exterior and all mechanical systems. And even if they were to do that, the building had been renovated a number of times over the years and wouldn't particularly serve the purpose of a community clubhouse. So they've proposed to replace that with a building done in a similar idiom to, not only to the townhomes, but also to some of the other buildings that Chappaqua Crossing in the Georgian style. That can be specifically designed for the clubhouse and better serve its population. And they believe be more attractive from the outside. So that the goal is to have an integrated architectural feel from the townhomes and the clubhouse as you drive up the East Entry Drive, as many people do for their first look at Chappaqua Crossing.
I'm curious. There's a side building beyond the main guest house. Is that just for storage? I mean, it looks like an old...
Today?
Yeah.
It was a garage, I think. It's converted garage.
It was converted from a stable to a garage.
Yes, it was added to over time, a couple times.
Is that, do you know what the square footage of that is? Is it less than 1,000 square foot, more than 800?
The little building or the whole building?
Little building.
I can measure it. I don't know what it is.
I remember we had one project in Lawrence Farms East where there was a little cottage. And someone decided, well, I'm going to put it on wheels and take it away. And they repurposed it at another site somewhere. And, you know, it became an accessory apartment. I think it was not in our town, so we didn't see it come back. But I don't know what the status of that building is, but it looks like, from driving by, that it's in better shape than the main building.
I don't know, per se. Do you?
I do not.
No. We can find out.
Okay.
Do you need a garage in your backyard? Do you need a garage in your backyard?
Huh?
Do you need a garage?
No, I, I have one, thank you, thank you.
From a previous application.
Oh, yes.
Put your car in, but to put stuff in.
Put stuff? No, I, I have a wetland that's been created by runoff from the main road and from the town road. So, I, I have a setback issue. So, if it wasn't built before that happened, I can't, I can't do it.
Do I sense a violation? Bob, you'd have to get out there and check.
Have to ask him which came first, the wetland or the?
Well, the building came first, my friend. I've lived there for 40 years, so I have a sense of it, yes. Yeah, first I had to have, get my neighbor's water fixed and, you know, runoff, and then now it's the town I have to work with.
Bob, just go back to the suggestion about the list and amplify that a little bit. The clubhouse is another change from the PDCP. And that's why I think to be most, most effective, at least in my opinion, your, your team will make the judgment, is that you have the list. And connected to the list is a narrative which explains what your position is with respect to it, the justifications for it, and incorporates the extent appropriate, what's in the environmental analysis. Because the people you'll be speaking to will have different levels of understanding of where we are in the process. So, if you are thorough in that presentation, it will be very helpful in the discussion.
I agree.
Yeah, absolutely.
All right, thank you for that suggestion. I think it's, we will, we will follow up on it. That's my, running through the three categories of the broad topics that we, we looked at. We believe that, you know, this has been an evolution, but I think it's been certainly very helpful for us. We appreciate your, your assistance and your leaving us open to, giving us the opportunity to work with staff. Because it's, every time we, we go away with more work, but we also come away with, with some, some answers. So, that's, that's gonna help.
Thank you very much.
Give you back your conglor.
Thank you, I'll take yours. Great.
Any other questions, issues? Sabrina, anything at this point? I mean, we haven't seen anything, so.
Right, I think, so, you know, you'll have a chance to open up the package.
Yeah, oh, wait, I have a question.
And get comments from staff.
Exactly. So, realistically, it's quite a package here. What do you guys think in terms of being able to, and for us, to review it and have an intelligent conversation?
Monday. How about December?
What, Monday?
Not on the seventh. Not on the seventh. I, I mean, as you know.
It's on the list, I think.
See, you have six days left. He's got a big smile on his face.
Yeah, wait, excuse me, is it, is it six days or just merely six shifts?
Depends which way you look at it.
Well, it, I think that, Les, I mean, you and I need to go through the environmental analysis. You know, I think the second meeting in May would probably be feasible.
And we'll try to get as much information as we can that was requested this evening, completed prior to that. Because, you know, we're still anxious to move ahead, and I assume that we're not, you know, we'll have the conversation. We had talked about joint meeting, but I think we need to have more consensus here before we get to the point of that petition. Is that accurate?
I think that's accurate. I, I think.
I think that's important, before a joint meeting is useful. I know I have people getting ready to kill me in the back, but. Just space sauce, it's okay.
I think that the, the onus is, is now for staff and Les to review the information you've submitted and from the environmental perspective, identify where the changes are and the differences and what those impacts are. The board will need to, I think it will be helpful for the planning board to weigh in on their preferred scenario and the impacts in regards to advising the town board as to the better plan.
All right, and we will try to supplement the environmental analysis.
Narratives, as Les was suggesting.
Prior to that, because it will be our goal then, if we are waiting the four weeks to be able to do that, to try then to get at that point to where we're hoping to have a, freeze the master subdivision, understand the relief, et cetera, to be in a position to have a joint board meeting with the town board to have, talk about the process forward.
So, so tonight it was suggested that you refine the BURM issue with Steve. It was suggested that you put together a list of the changes and consider quasi-alternatives, kinda half basements, half not, some extended driveways, some not. When do you think that we would hear from you regarding those new additional things that were mentioned tonight?
I don't think we're gonna be able to answer that now. I think we're gonna have to get on a phone call and have a conversation about that. We will try to do it prior, as, you know, prior to the next meeting and clearly to give you as much time to review it as possible, because that's gonna improve our chances of achieving what we want to achieve in the next meeting. I just can't speak with particularly people who aren't here.
I think what Sabrina is getting to is that if you can't get it to us in a reasonable time before the May 21st meeting, it's not gonna be as, as helpful as it would otherwise be.
We get, we understand that.
You have six, six working days to talk to Steve.
The only issue that, well, I get that, but the, the only issue that we're gonna struggle with here when you get to the last point about, I mean, there's a, there is a type of neighborhood field. I think planning board member Curly said it best, I won't go through and repeat it, that we're trying to achieve. If we start to mix and match driveway length where you're gonna be parking some cars in and some cars out, I'm not sure we're gonna achieve what we want, but we'll, we'll, we'll go back to the drawing board and we'll talk about it. But we, we may not be supplying that, because we may just say it's just not something that is gonna achieve what we're trying to do. But we will. Explain why this makes sense, that's all. We will certainly, we will certainly endeavor to answer the question.
But at the same token, you're gonna quantify the impacts of the basements and of all the things you're proposing. So, you have, you have that baseline.
Is that in there already?
Yeah, well, I don't know.
The impact is it relieves, alleviates the parking issue, because we have placed the store space, so let's stay down in the basement.
And the negative is, is more cut to deal with.
How much that cut.
It's late. Yeah, no, it is. Okay, anyone else anything?
Right, just, just on the dirt. Feel, I feel this coming over me today. But, you know, one of the factors on the dirt is, is the loop rope. All right, so, some of these things will drift, you know, your, your foundational comments on why this is, a net positive will pull away some things from other aspects.
That alternative that was positive, maybe that'll make up for some more of that, so.
Yeah, we'll look at it.
Okay. We, we certainly have notes of everything that was brought up this evening. One last issue on, on the parking. I just took a quick look, haven't looked at it in detail. But look especially to the north end and look to see how limited the so-called street parking is. It's different than the, the south end.
Okay.
Also, I think it's hilly down there too, so. Okay, anyone else?
Nope.
Thank you very much for your time and presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we have a request for an extension. And this is from the Newcastle Fire Department, District Number One. Application for a re-subdivision plat, lot merger and waiver of jurisdiction, site development plan, tree removal permit, stormwater pollution prevention plan approval, 491, 495 King Street, Route 120, Elmer Street. As far as I understand, no issues with this, Bob or Sabrina, with the extension that's been requested?
No problem, no objection.
Any issues at all?
Night.
Night.
If not, is there a motion to grant the extension requested by the fire department?
So moves.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, and we have two discussion items that have been added to our agenda for this evening.
Jen is actually coming back in.
Oh.
She was working in the other room.
Oh, my goodness. I saw Drew walk by. Oh, she's coming in for her too?
Yeah. I didn't see Drew.
Yeah, I saw her walk by. I was wondering why she was here, it's like.
Yes, you've got two local laws.
Just wandering into the town hall. Good night.
Back here, Steve.
Night, thanks.
Is it confirmed six?
Six weeks.
Six days.
So, this is it, your final planning board appearance?
Potentially.
Tomorrow.
As an employee.
Did you send in the plans that came in?
What's his name?
For this?
Sorry to keep delaying.
Nice relaxing review.
Okay, so we have the town board referral on the local law to amend Chapter 60, Section 210 and 410 regarding retail marijuana sales. So, we had a draft memorandum. Staff is prepared. I thought I saw you, it was like, why? Cracking up here.
I wondered who walked in. I heard the door, I'm like, wait a minute.
He's gonna hit the button here, call the police, why? What's going on? Anyway, so we have a draft memo here. My thoughts on it is, are, that the, when you turn, the fourth paragraph really should be something that we lead with. Because it seems to me that this was initially drafted with some level of urgency by the town board, because they thought that the state was going to adopt the legislation. And then, we can walk into the other things and say, we should, we think we should take some time to take a better look at this and do some more comparison. But it seems to me that this was drafted, you know, as, as a Band-Aid really fast to match the vape laws. And for all the reasons that are outlined in here, perhaps we turn it inside out, it really ought not to be considered the same, though we talk about the mapping, et cetera. So, that would be my organizational thought in terms of how to lay this out.
I have an additional thought, which we didn't discuss the last time, but I wanted to bring it up. And that is to take a look at that tattooing law, which outlaws tattoo parlors in Newcastle because of the difficulty of enforcing the safety, the age limits and the, and the safety involved with tattoos. It's, it's got a, it's got a preamble of findings. And I'm wondering if that could be a model to take a look at, to potentially apply to the sale of, one of the shops or whatever they're called.
Well, my bet, my guess is that, given the way the town board felt that we really had to move forward on this, that it certainly wasn't considered, it may not have been considered as fully. So, certainly it's something that they could certainly take a look at.
Could that be added to the memo?
Yeah, yeah.
Because that's a good point.
That's the whole, that's it.
Did, did, do other people agree that there's just this feeling that the town board had to put this together? They put this together very quickly and they found something, we can match it, we can put this right on top of them with some quick changes, get a law out in the event that the state and the budget included a provision that legalized marijuana statewide? That was my sense.
That seems to be the case, but I don't know that to be the case, so.
I was not there, no.
Yeah, I, I don't have a sense of it at all.
No, I think Drew's the person to answer that.
And why that would be pertinent anyway.
Were you there for the drafting? Were they of the marijuana law?
So, we were just instructed to put marijuana retail facilities into the vape law because of the impending.
Timing.
Exactly, because the, everyone thought that the governor's budget was going to get adopted of legalizing recreational marijuana.
Yeah, I remember that discussion last time.
Yeah, exactly. So, that's why I was moving forward very quickly.
Right.
And they thought the most efficient, best way to regulate these facilities would be to use an existing provision. And that would allow us to move it forward, and then we could kind of see how that went and change it later on. But they wanted to get something on the books, because it was so urgent at the time.
Is there an age limitation in vaping shops?
18.
18?
Did, did they change that to 21?
We changed, thank you, yes. It was 21.
21.
Under a different, a section outside the zoning code, if I recall, in 21. 18, I believe, was what was proposed at this time for marijuana, but that could be changed as well to 21.
Well, I, I would think that we would want a higher age, because, you know, my, what I've read, it's not a lot, about formation of a, of a full working brain. It certainly isn't ready at 16 and barely read.
It's like 25.
25, yeah.
Only five, I thought.
Yeah, age 25 is, is kind of the, the age that brain development stops.
But this aren't gonna be town law, it's not state law.
Right, that would be.
Well, but we can make it more stringent, I would think.
We, we might pre, so those types of regulations could be preempted by whatever the state adopts. The state could say that this is the age.
Which they will.
And, and that's it.
They're not gonna leave this open to local towns and municipalities to make that decision. It'll come out of all the names.
Exactly. The federal regulation of tobacco does not preempt local governments from regulating the age, which is why we're able to increase it to 21.
Interesting.
The town is?
The town, yeah, the town increased tobacco to 21.
I didn't know that.
So, is it anticipated that a, a state law, if it were passed, would, would regulate the age at which it could be sold? But it doesn't apply to cigarettes?
I'm sorry, say that, say that again?
I'm, I'm trying to understand that we're allowed to increase the age at which it becomes legal in our town to sell cigarettes, but we wouldn't be able to do that if there were a law about marijuana, the legalization of marijuana?
Potentially. I, I don't know, because the legislation hasn't been approved.
Well, I would think that we would wanna push for, you know, an older age. I mean, cigarettes is one thing. You, if you smoke them, you won't die for, you know, probably 40 or 50 years. All right? Whereas if you have your brain wrecked, then you're a wreck for those 45 or 50 years.
This is, this is obviously a rhetorical discussion.
Expert-based?
No, it's not expert-based, it is hyperbole-laden.
Okay.
So, right now, the focus is just on regulating these facilities from a zoning perspective. If at a later date, when this law becomes, when the state, when it becomes legal at the state level, we can then reevaluate, are there any regulations we want to adopt that we're allowed to adopt that might be outside of zoning, such as age restrictions and things like that?
Right, and again, I think that zoning was used because it was the fastest vehicle out there to get regulation on the books.
And I don't wanna lose the age thing, you know, and put it aside. I think it has to be in print somewhere, that the age at which would be appropriate for all this stuff is very important.
So, it's news to me that the town has the, the authority to regulate the age of, for tobacco sales. I didn't know that. And so, the suggestion is then, I guess, that we could extend that potentially. We could recommend that we extend that to marijuana sales.
Well, and it's. In the event that it's not preempted by the state, so the tobacco is interesting, because it was regulated, it's regulated at a federal level. This is a very interesting situation, because marijuana is illegal.
At a federal level, yes, it's illegal.
Illegal at a federal level, but states can.
Highly regulated.
Right, so it, it, you know, you'd have, and then you have the state, the state-level regulation and then potentially different local government regulation. So, it is a trickier situation that we're gonna have to pay attention to, to see how the law develops, because now you do, you'd have three levels of regulation for these marijuana retail facilities, so.
This is currently sanctuary smoking.
Uh, no comment.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, I don't, I don't know about how deeply into this issue the planning board, it's appropriate for us to get with respect to age restrictions and so on. If we wanna suggest that the town board take that on, then I guess that's fine.
That's, I think, I think that's what we're saying.
Exactly. Yeah, it's not a zoning issue.
I think the, the mapping that we recommend, I think Sheila recommended last time, making, taking a look at the mapping and making sure the mapping makes sense and accomplishes what we want to accomplish, whatever that is. And, but again, have them really consider that, because the mapping was, did not include Chapel Court Crossing.
It definitely is a zoning issue, but it's also more than that.
Bob's suggestion, though, not mine. But I think we should take a look at that, the code on tattooing and the prohibition on tattoo parlors in Newcastle because of the difficulty of enforcing and policing the regulations that exist around it.
Yeah, I think at the end of that second paragraph would be a good place to slot that in.
Yep.
And I agree with the fourth paragraph.
Would the goal of looking at the tattoo regulations be to try and get the town to prohibit marijuana retail facilities? Because that's an option without looking at.
I would speak for myself on that. I, I would think that would be a desirable goal.
Yeah, because the, I don't think we have to look at the tattoo law to get us there. The town could have chosen to prohibit these facilities, because there's no legislation out there. Right now, they're illegal, they're prohibited, no matter what we do at this time. The idea was that the, it, under certain legislation the state adopts, it could allow municipalities to opt out, meaning prohibit these facilities from coming to your municipality. So, that's something we can, instead of maybe, we'll talk about the tattoo, but maybe we'll, we'll encourage them to consider prohibiting it, if that's, if that's your point.
Uh, that may be some people's point, but I, I wouldn't take that position. So, I don't think that there's uniformity or. So I don't think that there's uniformity or consensus on that.
Okay.
And also, you know, your comments in the memo talks about doing the additional zoning analysis. You know, when it came to vape shops, there was only select areas where you could have a vape shop. The same thing, I think, would be similar, if not more restrictive, based on what we were looking at before in relation to the proposed law regarding the location of the facilities.
You know, the, I just wonder if the, if conflating the two, that the town board did, I guess, in a hurry, right? Conflating the two suggests that there is essentially no difference between the two, the two. In terms of social impact, et cetera, et cetera, threat to children, all that stuff. I guess that's a determination that they've already made, or they have not yet made that, or they've relied on other evidence that says that, yeah, these things are essentially equal. For us to suggest that they are not equal, I'm not in a position to say that. I mean, I'm just not.
Yep.
I may have a social feeling about it, which may be different than other people's, right? So I'm not in a position to, for, it's hard for me, as a member of a planning board, recommending to the town board that level of specificity on this subject. I mean, I think that it's fair to say, it looks like this is done really quickly, without being disrespectful. And I think that's Paragraph Four, and saying, these are the things that we have discussed and we think that should be under consideration. But I don't think it's, I couldn't sign on to saying that we ought to put an age limit on it, and we ought to, you know, ban them from the town. I don't think that I have the information, and I don't think, on that subject, and even if I did, I don't think I would agree to that.
Yep. My sense is, though, even with the vape shops, is, which was before Chapel Creek Crossing was open, if you do the Venn diagrams, by the time you finish, in effect, it was a zoning approach to prohibit vaping. So I think, again, they were thinking perhaps the same way. But again, again, the reason I would lead with something like the fourth paragraph is to be, you know, conciliatory and say, look, you may not, you may have been rushed. So now you have an opportunity to look at this, expand your mapping, look at this more thoroughly, consider whether it's equal, whether it's not, consider age, whatever you want to consider. But I agree with Tom, I don't think it's our position to make those kinds of recommendations on.
Well, then we also might want to include something about the fact that other municipalities are enacting laws to ban it. And that might make the remaining municipalities more of a magnet for these types of businesses, if and when it become, it would become legal in the state.
Yep, that could be an issue, sure.
Good. That's a fair point.
Okay. So I guess we'll work, we'll just rework this a little bit. I'll try to get some stuff off, and then we can get it out to everyone again.
I mean, if you're looking at things that harm people, you know, you could do with fewer liquor stores. So, I mean, I think that it's a touchy subject, that goes places that I'm not sure that we need to go.
Well, I don't think we can legislate, you know, the age or some of these other things, but so.
Came to you on referral.
Okay, and the other one, this is a town board referral on the local law to amend a town code regarding small cell wireless facilities. This was the 5G discussion, and Sabrina has started with a memo here, but Sabrina, why don't you listen on this and tell us where you are.
I started a memo based on your comments at your last meeting, combined with some of my research and, you know, kind of what I was thinking. Based on the conversation last week, really boils down to aesthetics, and there's a couple of things that relate to aesthetics. You know, structural integrity, sightlines, safety, things of that nature. I haven't yet found all of the answers that I need to find in order to truly address the aesthetics. One of the questions that I've been searching for today, and I really haven't had an opportunity to touch base with Drew, maybe she knows. But what is in the equipment cabinet that's on the ground? Is it one cabinet per array of small cells? Can the cabinet be extended to be located behind a building instead of in the right-of-way? You know, there's just, I don't have enough information about how the technology works today to be able to complete this, to give you a draft to review that we can give back to the town board.
So, yeah, thank you for this effort. I wonder if the first question is whether the FCC on 5G in particular, with all the deregulation that's going on these days in the federal government. Whether actually we are gonna have anything to say about this in the new 5G regulations? I don't know. Jennifer, if you have any experience with that, or information on that. But I get the sense that, that they're gonna be, these providers are gonna be in a position of coming in and saying, you know, this is what it is, and you really don't have anything to say about this.
The September 2018 FCC order specifically left wide open for local municipalities to regulate aesthetics. To develop a set of objective regulations on aesthetics. And that's where.
We can have our own.
Yes.
Criteria on that?
Absolutely.
Okay.
And as long as they're objective and they're applied across the board, they can be equally applicable across the board to all kinds of utilities.
That's the shape, the shape of the box, right?
Right.
I mean, the color of the box.
Yeah. It could be, it could be weathered, it could be put on the ground.
Camouflage and colors.
Is that right, but is that right?
Yes, no, that is within our purview.
And that's where I think the board should really spend a majority of its time focusing. Because I think that's gonna be the largest impact on the community.
And so what I'm, what I'm trying to do for you under that emphasis is to try and create the platform within which we can create that scale of what is visually acceptable aesthetically versus not. And for example, you know, right now, the code is written, you know, antennas that are no larger than three cubic feet. I say in my memo, antennas that are no larger than three cubic feet, or that equate to approximately a medium-sized box that you can hold in your hand. Okay? And then it talks about antenna equipment excluding antennas and backup power equipment. Do these facilities need backup power equipment? If they're attached to the grid and they're feeding off of a 4G tower, do they need a generator on the ground? Question. That's a twenty-eight cubic feet, cannot, can be no more than twenty-eight cubic feet in volume. Can we say that they, I've seen references that they, that they may not be located on the ground? Which means you've got a large refrigerator up on the pole? Okay, because that's what twenty-eight cubic feet is. Or can we put them underground? And that gets into my question of what is in that equipment cabinet?
So, these are all great questions that we, that we don't have the answer to. And so, we, do we have a consultant who is going to answer this question?
I'm working on that right now.
Because I think that's the next step for us to.
Yeah. Again, I focused today in trying to weed through this. I have to reach out to the right people who could potentially get us this answer. It does not bring me comfort that Rob Guardioso sits here and says he doesn't know because.
They're gonna settle it.
No, it's, there's a lot, there's a lot of unknowns, and the designs vary all over the place. So I've seen a lot of small cell applications that don't have any ground-mounted equipment, and that are just.
A box on the pole like this big.
Just antennas, yeah, on the pole that big. However, the FCC gave this broad definition, and they set the size restrictions that we can't alter. So in the Pittsburgh example, which was great, thank you for sending that to us, but it was adopted June 2018, and the FCC order was adopted September 2018. So if someone came in and said, you can't force us to be that size because the FCC said small cells are this size, they might have an argument against the Pittsburgh guidelines. But they're still good for us to look at, to kind of get a sense of where do we want to go. So there are aesthetic regulations set forth in the draft law right now that are a step in that direction. And we can continue to kind of beef those up and do more to make Newcastle, you know, preserve the look of Newcastle.
Right, there's a big discussion on how antennas and equipment are attached to poles. Whether it's through the use of direct contact on all, on one side of a flush contact like this versus a bracketed contact like this. When you look at the pictures of this versus this, depending on the size, is it this or is it this? This is probably better.
Are you getting tougher minutes?
That was so technical that I just got lost.
But it's the bracket discussion.
No, in terms of the camouflaging, so some of the pictures that we looked at online, and some of the pictures that Drew distributed the last time we were together, they seem to focus on the light pole kind of concealment.
Correct.
But we're probably looking more at the telephone pole.
Correct.
So what kind of camouflage techniques exist for telephone poles? Is it just enclosing the antenna in a big box so that it just doesn't look like a raw antenna?
Painted tan or brown or, but, but, but.
I've seen a couple that were, are designed as like mailboxes, as benches, you know, so you can try and encourage the applicant to achieve that look.
But, but folks, here's a question, though. When we think about, you know, there's power and fiber optics are the two essential components of what is needed in an area. Are we, what I really want to know, are we really looking, because most of the reference to small cells are in major cities. You know, I have yet to come across a countryside, Westchester County, small cell network.
In one of the reports that was distributed for the Homeland Towers application.
Yes, yes.
It talked about Scarsdale having adopted an ordinance in 2013 that said you could only use small cells.
Correct. Those are for DAS systems, which were extending the 3G cellular signal.
Oh, so it wasn't even considering what we're now looking at?
No, it's completely.
Which is why we don't know what we're looking at for 5G.
Correct, correct. But again, Scarsdale, a little more dense, more, more of a network, less land area to put a big tower. Okay, so what I really want are a compilation of coverage maps of 4G throughout the town. To really understand, what are we talking about here? And are we talking about along our town roads, or are we looking at our hamlets? Are we looking all over the place?
There's, I, I, the list of things that he, the gentleman, gave us with respect to the application.
Correct.
Who are the users of this? That list did not strike me as something that is gonna have a lot of demand in a place like Newcastle. It just didn't seem to me, I mean, he talked about driverless cars, okay, one day, yeah, maybe. But why are we buying that, installing that technology now? It seems to me that most of these applications have to do with density, right?
City, city grids.
City stuff. And it may be true that this is not coming here anytime soon. That doesn't mean that we shouldn't get ahead of the curve.
Absolutely.
But I don't think it's coming here anytime soon.
And I think, you know, just one of the thoughts I had, I think it's important that we, you know, we adopt regulations in case it does come sooner than anticipated. But it's important that we pay attention to what's going on around us. Because, yes, the FCC set forth this April 14th date, but we're obviously, we're already past that. And we can always amend the law in the future to respond to what's happening. What are these facilities looking like? What do we think we need in this community? So this is not the end of the road, this is just the beginning of the road.
No, and I was mystified frankly, this evening earlier, when we really, you know, the tower folks really didn't have much to say about technology. And to Tom's point, South Korea's got this. Why we, they have the technology. So this, this answer that we don't know what the technology is, it's there, it's existing, it's, apparently, it's, it's out there. And I don't get that. So, and that seems to me that, I don't know what the consultants are doing, but that kind of feedback is important, to understand just what the technology does, what it can do. Can it be underground? Must it be at certain levels? How far is the distance? These guys are saying, well, we don't know. It's like, how can you not know? You're in the industry, and it's over here.
He's saying it, listen.
But here, but here, here's another aspect of this, the co-location. Drew, is co-location regulated by the FCC?
What do you, what do you mean, is co-location?
Does FCC say you need to put more than one provider on a pole?
FCC says that you can put more than one provider.
Okay, it says you can, but, because here's my question. If it turns out that these are so visually cluttered, then we don't allow more than one on a pole?
If the technology works.
So we're getting to.
Because we have this ten-foot separation on poles that we hear about on 4G, right?
Exactly, exactly. And so, you know, again, finding out how the technology works is supposed to work.
Are we writing the guidelines tonight? Yes, maybe we do say it, maybe we don't say it. I mean, this, I'm sorry, the discussion is sort of, at this point, we really don't know what we're talking about. So I really think that, to me, the next thing to do is to get the consultant on board. And begin to put together the matrix of things that are, that are doable, and give us the technology so that we understand.
So this is, this is just an update for you, I'm trying to work on a draft.
No, I understand that. No, I, no, I understand that. No, I got it.
Is this, are we not gonna discuss the specifics of this draft?
You don't need to, no. Just, it's just to give you, if you'd like to read it and give me some feedback, you're more than welcome to.
Just, I haven't had a chance to read it.
No, you haven't. But if you want to take it and then, you know, send some emails around, or however you want to do it, or wait.
I just have one comment right now. Because it caught my eye, and I haven't read it comprehensively, so maybe you address this. But in the last paragraph on the first page, where you're talking about the overarching comments that town's legislation should address, concerns to safety, structural integrity. I think it should be made clear that one of the concerns is whether the poles, which are already quite laden with lines and equipment. Whether they have the ability to accommodate whatever the weight of these additional antennas and boxes and all of that kind of, whatever, we don't know what it is, you know?
I think that's a good comment, but whose poles are those? Con Ed's?
That, I think last week.
If you ask Con Ed, they say, no.
It's not their poles?
I don't know.
They say it's Verizon, they say it's not, but no.
Well, whoever's poles, they're gonna say they're perfectly fine, because this is money.
I'm telling you right now, they're gonna get in, connected with the utility companies, and they're gonna say to us already, we went with their engineers, we discussed it with their engineers. They have structural integrity, and what are we gonna say? Well, show us all the computations, we're gonna review it?
They do have to submit a signed engineer's report pursuant to the law as drafted, that confirms that they are.
Structurally sound.
Yeah, structurally sound, and withstand winds, snow, rain, whatever.
I would imagine it's what you sound there.
When we look at, when we drive around town and we look at poles that our listing has is.
Well, you also have to think, I mean, this, this equipment, this is their equipment, right? They're not going to install it on a pole that's gonna fall down because that'll ruin their equipment, so.
But that's a very valid point, in the sense that if it is not a, if it's not an aesthetic-looking pole, and they're adding more clutter to that pole. Can we, as we are saying, recommend, you know, to remove the double pole?
Yeah.
Can we say, where necessary, replace the pole? From an aesthetic standpoint? I mean, again, this is all kind of just talking about the different aspects, but I think your comment is definitely worth consideration.
I think you have a better chance with the aesthetics than with the structural.
Because you're gonna get rubber stamped on the structural.
Report engineers, and it's gonna be rubber.
Yes, all poles must be perpendicular. Drew.
But then that's subjective too, as well.
Okay, good.
What's that?
All right. Are we set? Is there a motion to close the meeting?
Motion.
Second.
No favor?
Aye. Aye.